Here. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here, here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth? Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Thank you. Um. Next up is minutes from the previous meeting of October 12th. Are there any? Is there a motion? Bill?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any corrections? Bill?
And the first item in your business resolution number T 2020 10 dash 10 dash 019R had us all voting yes, but I voted no on that.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Are there any further corrections? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, sing non. We'll move on to public participation. Before we begin, I'd like to read these instructions. The city takes public comment via email, written format and verbally. On October 12th, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join the meetings as either a Zoom webinar or telephone participant to make verbal input. Public input is a time for board members to listen to the public discussion, debate, commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person and input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole, maintain respect for the process and respect for members of the council, city staff and general public. The meeting chair or member of the public body has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, threatening or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone. We'll ask the speaker to send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record. And the meeting record closes at the adjournment of the meeting. Thank you for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. We'll move on to public input. Alan Axelrod?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, so I first wanted to thank Mayor Marlin and Township Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth for their work when it comes to trying to bring awareness to the issue of utility shut offs in Champaign-Urbana. I also wanted to thank Julie Pride, the CU PhD Administrator, as well as all the city council persons who have showed up. Sorry, all the persons. I was just at a Bloomington City Council meeting, a little discombobulated. But I wanted to note a few things that have happened since the last time we've engaged. One of which was that we spoke to the Illinois Commerce Commission again to update them on how things were going. And that same day, they sent out a letter to all municipal and cooperative owned utilities in the state. And I'll just read the beginning and end of it real quick. It says, "To regulatory representatives of municipal public utilities and cooperatives." And this is from the Executive Director of the ICC. "Over the past eight months, our state's residents have faced incredible financial challenges due to COVID-19 pandemic. The effects of the pandemic have permeated every city and community in Illinois and have left our most vulnerable residents struggling to pay their utility bills as we approach the winter months. I write today to urge you to respond to this public health emergency by ceasing residential disconnections through March 31st, 2021 for individuals who are low income or self-certify a financial or COVID-19 related hardship." The last thing that they note, "I acknowledge that the commission may have little or no statutory authority over your utility or cooperative. Nonetheless, I am asking you for your help once again to show that you are all in for Illinois by implementing a disconnection moratorium through March 31st, 2021 for individuals who are low income or self-certify financial or COVID-19 related hardship." We must, and again, it said self-certify, "We must continue to take proactive action to support the people of Illinois through this pandemic and health crisis." And that's signed from Kristi George, Executive Director of the Illinois Commerce Commission. She sent that letter right after we had brought to her attention that not only did Wisconsin have a moratorium on corporate utilities, but they also enacted one on municipal and cooperative utilities because their COVID rate continued to rise. And there's a reason why they only sent out this letter to the municipality and cooperative own. For one, as you heard there, they're continuing to recommend the means-tested approach despite the best available data on this matter, which comes from the Sangamon County Health Department, which had over 300 disconnections in the last week of September alone. Turns out, all the 6,543 disconnections from Ameren, Illinois was a single week. They disclosed to WCIA that they did those disconnections on September 24th. And when you look at the Sangamon County Health Department's data, it shows the rate of coronavirus and the positivity rate skyrocket right after that. There is no contesting that. That said, there's also another reason why they didn't reissue any sort of statement as of yet on the corporate utilities. Going to Warren Buffett's utility in the state of Illinois, Mid-American. It reads, "First in July, the commission staff asked Mid-American to consider extending its moratorium for residential customers for 30 days. Mid-American agreed to this. Commission staff made a similar request in late August. However, before the company could respond, the commission issued a letter on September 4th, 2020, signed by all five commissioners, requesting utilities cease disconnecting residential customers for non-payment until March 31st, 2021." That was us. So anyway, I'll leave the rest in marks for later. Just wanted to update you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next up is Bo Barber.
All right. Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. I wasn't really quite sure to whether present to Cunningham Township or Urbana City Council, but I just thought, you know, either way, just make my voice heard here. So I was also going to speak about no Ameren shut offs. Um, so this past, the last week, um, I've worked with organizers affiliated with the No Ameren Shut Offs campaign. And then in conjunction with Township Supervisor Danielle Chenoweth, after presenting to CU PhD about the number of disconnects that have already occurred, as Alan had mentioned, within the span of only one week. So from about the times of, I think it was November, November 2nd to about November 4th. And I may be off like by a day or two, but then during that amount of time, there were over 200 disconnect notices sent out in Champaign County. And 100 of them were within the city of Urbana, the city limits of Urbana. Alongside Danielle's amazing efforts, another selfless activist going door to door and doing what they can, dropping off flyers. We've made successful contact or somewhat kind of meaningful contact with at least 30 of these people. So there's still 70 people that we haven't gotten to. Most took up conversation, but a couple of them didn't want to talk. And the one, the one thing is, is sure, there may be some people that may or may not actually have a problem. Maybe they paid their bill late or, you know, maybe they're okay, maybe they've got it. But the problem is, is with over 100, you know, with over 100 people within this, the city limits of Urbana potentially being affected by this. This is a gamble to take. So to do nothing about it, and that's why, that's why we're trying to do something about it because we can't, you know, we can't wait to see what happens. Because if not, then, you know, worst case scenario, over 100 people get, get their utilities disconnected. And then to get reconnected, they have to go through all this work and then they also have to pay late fees. People have already been disconnected. They had to go through late fees, which adds on to the initial cost that they were already having trouble with trying to get past. Fortunately, Cunningham Township has offered a lot of immediate aid. But, you know, it's, it's, it's still an information fact-finding mission. We have to go out and find these folks. And, you know, some people say, well, it's easy because all they got to do is just, you know, call, do all this stuff. But the problem is, is even then, like, you know, for some people that called, the story that came out in WCIA about Cedric Robinson, he called, he called Ameren, Illinois, like he was, you know, told that would be the reasonable thing to do. And correct me if I'm wrong in it, but, you know, he called on a Friday. He asked if he could get his payment done on Wednesday instead, and they said, sure. And then they promptly shut his power off on Monday. This is, this is a major problem. And there was one other person through canvassing door to door. I won't say this person's name because, you know, they didn't, they didn't agree to be outed about it. But, you know, this person was having, you know, kind of like anxiety. And I don't want to say like a mental crisis, but like, you know, as a grad student, I can attest to the fact, like, you know, sometimes I get so overwhelmed that I, I fail to take care of myself. And it's not, it's not, you know, it's not this person's fault that they didn't read their mail for a couple of days and then did not realize that they were about to have their power shut off. So I might make some, I'll probably make some comments later in this Urbana City Council on further things. But I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention because there's, there's, there was 100 disconnect notices sent out on the city limits of Urbana. This is, this is bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That looks like all the people who wanted to speak. I will go on to committee to verify bills.
I just want to thank Gatlin and Bo and the No Ameren Shut Offs campaign for their work going door to door over this last week. We'll get to that in the supervisors memo, but while they're on, I just wanted to thank them. Committee to verify bills. So this last month, you can see our town fund had $47,645.83 in expenditures. Our general assistance fund had $72,700, excuse me, $72,669.45 in expenditures. That was a total of $117,964.10. And I just made a note that about 2,350 of that, 2,350 was interest in the Carl case payment as per your resolution. We are seeing, you know, the participant list bumps up and down. We're at 139, up from 134 last month. We were at, I was just looking in June, we were at 150. I think the highest we've gotten under COVID is 155. We three, we closed three cases, we opened eight. We are definitely seeing more people get social security reimbursements. So that has really helped our, our numbers. We also receive a reimbursement or they get on social security and we receive a reimbursement. We are seeing people going back to work. We definitely, a lot of the folks who came onto our roles were folks who were laid off due to COVID and did not have cash in the bank or some kind of cushion. We have 60 homeless. That's been pretty standard, more men than women. The average age has gone down. That, I think, shows the number of workers. So I think in the past, we've been, you know, it's average age 48, 47. We're now at about 44. We continue, we wanted to reopen the community work program starting in November because of the COVID transmission cases. We're not reopening that in November or December. So we're really going to have to see some improvement in our COVID transmission to open that up. We are continuing to have our participants submit documentation, pay stubs, continue to seek work. We continue to support them in that process. And then rental assistance, we were able to move six rental assistance cases up from four last month. And we are looking to relax some of the rules and increase the assistance. We are referring COVID-impacted Urbana residents to the city of Urbana. We've set up a pretty good partnership there. We're in pretty regular contact with the grants administrators to, to, to use funds when it's COVID impacted and they may not income qualify. So that, that's going well. And then we, I started this additional assistance list in part because we're just seeing a lot of unusual cases that don't fit the programs. And so we have really been working hard to move general assistance participants into housing. This is a public safety issue. We've been working hard on it, launched it under COVID and have moved seven so far. We did start an emergency housing program first with money from Y WCA and now from our angel donor fund. We have two rooms for people who are literally, families who are literally homeless with no other place to go. We do diversion counseling. We work closely with Crisis Nursery and the school district. And they need to have children, either a crisis nursery or the school district to approve residency. So, and then we've been helping people with application fees and other things. Those are small amounts. And then I didn't add it at the time, but we have been helping people with utility assistance. If they are shut off and doubled up, it is not safe for people to be doubled and tripled up right now. And if we're able to, we turn their utilities back on within an hour of them calling, as long as we can verify their Urbana residents. So we've helped several families with children do that because of this utility shut off. I will keep the rest for my supervisor's memo update, but that's kind of the town bills and some of the breakdown in terms of what we spent money on this last month. Happy to take any questions folks have.
Bill Brown?
Thanks, Danielle. We didn't, in our packet, we didn't get the same kind of detail that we usually get, the the bills and payroll. We received payroll and some bills, but nothing about the general assistance. But I did notice in the, in the payroll that the item for the salaries other is still creeping up. I know you guys have taken on a lot more. So our total budget for that was like 289,000. It looks like at this rate, it'll be closer to 360 or something. Do you think we need to do a budget amendment or?
So to answer your first question, I'm not really sure. We submitted the summary and the general assistance. But so I usually look at what I submitted you, but I just pulled up what's on the website and you're correct. So my suggestion is if I could send you all, so that you have a complete, you could bump that maybe down on the agenda so that you have access to it. I apologize. I don't, I don't know what happened.
I mean, I, I think mostly I would look at for your totals anyway, but it would be nice to have it so that we compare it month to month.
Absolutely. So the second piece is extra is, I will be talking about this in the supervisor's memo. But basically, as we discussed, we have over, we have $220,000 in Cure Act funding. A lot of that money goes to staff. We were dying in August. Like I was going to lose staff, how hard they were working. I hired interns on his staff. I hired, I basically moved three interns and who were high-performing interns into staff positions. There is 100% reimbursed through Cure Act funding. We're submitting our first reimbursement this Friday. I actually hope with disability reimbursements being at such a high level, we anticipate $50,000 in disability reimbursements this year. We budgeted for 20, I believe, 20,000, 20 or 25,000. That pays for a full-time disability advocate who needed it. And it pays for itself through that, that piece. So I've not made a final decision on that, but I'm hoping to retain that person and that all comes through that funding item. The second person is a housing advocate who created the Bridge to Home program that is funded 100% through the ESG funds. Those funds, it's actually in your packet tonight that will be, you'll be hopefully allowing to accept those funds and sign an agreement with the city of Urbana. The entire salary item is paid for by those funds. If we receive both round one and round two, we have no reason not to receive that. So the first round will pay for her time now and the second round will pay. So all of this is new money. It's not money. So I absolutely, just with the, the, both of those dollars. And then we received the Midwest Alliance grant of $10,000, totally unexpected funds. So I use those monies to support bringing on a person for this semester. So essentially, I'm very pleased that we've been able to staff up. It, I do not expect that we'll actually be dipping into our township dollars for those staff item, for those staff lines because of those new monies. And I am going to have to bring a budget amendment. Any one of those large grants would have triggered that. So basically, I'm waiting for the state to, you know, to move on this, the ESG funds. And then we're in a position to do a budget amendment. So maybe January might be a good estimated time for that.
Okay, so it sounds like if there's a budget amendment, it'll be basically budget neutral because it'll be bringing in money and, and the same money.
Yeah, in fact, I think it'll be better than budget neutral. I mean, we're looking at a deficit that I am not happy with this year. That's what you approved as a budget. And I believe that we've been able to fundraise to reduce that deficit. So, yeah, I think it'll be better than neutral. But, you know, who knows what the future has in store? It's not sure from a day-to-day basis.
Kind of, kind of related to that with the extra people, are there, how many people physically are in the building at a time? And the reason I'm asking is I know some of that grant money is, is meant to cover any physical improvements you need to make in the building. And one of the things that you could do would be to improve filtration and circulation of the air. If there's more people working in there.
Yeah, actually, I mean, the township building has, when I came, it had eight workspaces and eight staff. Four on the assessor's side, four on the supervisor's side. We reorganized that using the conference room to 13 workspaces as of this spring between the assessor and myself. And this is mostly me. I have 14 full-time equivalents. The assessor will have five going down to four after the quad-year reassessments. We're, we have 19 full-time equivalents. So no, it's not safe to have 19 people in that building and we don't. And I will be discussing a little bit later, some of the space constraints we're under. And I have a chart to show you what juggling 19 people in a small building looks like. So, um, so we are purchasing HEPA filtration into three main rooms. And I've done a lot of research because, you know, this is a time when you could, could buy a lot of useless things that people are marketing to. So all of that will be funded by Cure Act funding. But ultimately, what's really safe is masks at all times, at least six feet. And my preference is eight feet and good air filtration without a lot of air that's moving during the day. So according to public health, you really want to move and filter the air at night or after hours. So that's what we're working on, putting on a timer.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I just want to add that there is still, as we go back and look at things that are reimbursable from the last fiscal year, there is a good chance that it could be more than budget positive. So it's just a matter of us looking through line by line and making sure we get everything reimbursed that we possibly can.
Yep. That's what my days are. Basically, my days are going and coming through payments and submitting things to portals at DCO. So that's my life right now.
Any other questions? Is there a, Jared?
I was just gonna, unless we want to wait until we get that, I was just gonna move to approve the town fund and the general assistance fund.
Okay, does there a second?
I'll do that then, Dennis.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Is there further discussion? Wayne?
Yeah, just so you know, the township operates under a different set of budget rules than the, than the city. So it's not so much a budget amendment that'll happen as you guys will have to pass a brand new budget. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of officers.
So let's see. I was so flummoxed by the bills thing. I just sent you all the bills that I sent the exact same email. So, um. Okay, so first off, I just want to say thank you, Urbana voters, and thank you, town board, for your confidence in our work. I was pleasantly surprised by 63% of Urbana voters, almost 64% voting yes, to allow for an increase in the property tax levy. I, you know, put our, the presentation I gave you is on our website and has been on throughout. And I feel like Urbana voters are very intelligent, were able to look at the details. And even, you know, though these are hard times, they, you know, open their hearts and, and were willing to increase the tax levy by an average of $3 per month per household. So I am working with a team of interns. I have a capstone master's degree student from urban planning and another urban planning student. And then staff member Tomas in my office, who's about to get his master's degree in May. And we are working on a strategic plan for township. So I hope to bring a draft to you this winter. And we have our town, annual town meeting in the spring, and I will bring it to that town meeting in the spring so that it's really clear what the intention is with that levy and increase and what people can expect from it over multiple years. As the Bo and Ellen mentioned, utility shut offs has been a big issue this last week. We thought it would just be the tax levy, but no, we had to have many things happen in one week. So as, wearing my hat as board chair of the public health department, Julie had requested and the board was interested in discussing the utility shut offs that were pending. And so we had a fruitful discussion at the board meeting, decided to send a letter from CU Public Health again, you know, asking the governor, as the both mayors have done, to enact a moratorium on utility shut offs. And I think what made it very real is that in the month of November, unlike September and October, according to the Public Utilities Act, the public health department receives a list of every name and address of people facing utility shut offs due to non-payment. We had 98 households in the township alone and a number right outside the township. A total of over 200 Champaign County residents on this list. We received the list from Ameren Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They sent it in pieces. We compiled it thanks to Bo's help, actually compiled it into one list. I shared it with the mayors so they would be aware. The township, basically, I relocated a bunch of intern time last week to mail every single person. I personally canvassed people on Tuesday because I thought that, I just wanted to know how accurate this list was and what the situation was. So I went to East Urbana. Dennis, I was over at your, your district. And, um, and I knocked on doors in East Urbana. And spoke with a number of people. I spoke with a woman in her early 80s who had no idea this was happening. A woman who was dealing with domestic violence. We had a very long and productive conversation. I helped to direct her. And I spoke with a family. And then since then, because of our flyering, we've been receiving calls, probably about two a day, two or three a day. And I have been checking to, based on their situation, you know, is it feasible to go ahead and try to get them to apply for LIHEP? One family had applied for LIHEP, but they did not have physical social security cards, which are required to apply for LIHEP. And it's very difficult to get those during a pandemic. So they did not get, so I paid, angel donors paid their bill. So anyway, we've been working on this piece, but it is, it is really a serious public health problem there. I got stories on Fox News and Channel 3 about it and. And, um, I have circulated a petition, uh, which we will be sending tomorrow. And we're at 222, um, responses. And I mostly sent it to the Human Services Council, the homeless service providers, and local public officials. Certainly, anyone can sign it, but that was the target. So if you haven't signed it already, I will send it to you during this meeting. So if you would like to sign it, you can. Um, and I really, uh, I cannot underestimate the impact on the COVID surge that we're experiencing locally by forcing people to double and triple up. It is just a really awful situation for people to deal with right now. Um, just a few other things that, um, I, I will not go over my whole memo, which is the long. I'm extremely proud of our housing advocacy team, uh, the interns. We have 18 applications submitted. Um, there's several, there were two house, subsidized housing opportunities that were very, very short. We had 74 calls for Haven flats and 40 calls made for Oakwood Trace. Um, we've continued to work with people on their social security payments, and we see the dividends pay off on that. And we have helped over 2,000 residents be fed through the bucket brigade. Um, and we have closed our season of vegetables. There actually is still some kale in the garden, if you want to go pick it, it's there, and some chard. But generally speaking, uh, we made 32 donations throughout the season of fresh vegetables. And thanks to Urbana Park District for offering us the Victory Gardens plots, we are able to really almost triple the volume of produce we are able to produce with our, with our intern and volunteer team. We had a great volunteer team that, um, helped to support our intern. Um, we continue to see about one call every six minutes. We have about over 160 applications picked up per month. Um, we did mail a postcard to every household in Urbana with a few exceptions. Um, and it's about 20,000 households. So very happy to let folks know about a host of resources. Um, and I think that's it for my supervisor memo. Um, Wayne, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'll, uh, keep it brief. We had approximately 289 assessment appeals. We're down to resolving the last 98 of them. Um, we're working every day to do that. Uh, depending on how things go in the next couple of weeks, I may have, uh, resolutions to intervene and some in PTAB. So I'll keep you guys posted.
Okay, any questions? Mary Alice?
Thank you for the update, Danielle. Um, I have two questions. One, there's been, uh, we've been talking a lot about Ameren. I'm wondering if you have any updates in terms of the Illinois water, if there are shut offs pending for that.
You know, I, it's a really great question. I think it's, I know that, um, it's also voluntary shut off with water. And I don't think we received the same notifications, um, but I have a note in about that. So I think, you know, obviously, power and water are both essential. And I've been chasing the Ameren shut offs from that list last week. I, I don't have a good update for you.
Do they, the same, do they have the same obligation to, uh, to inform the Public Health District?
They do not, um, the, the, um, Noah Ameren shut offs campaign reports that there's shut offs in Champaign. Um, but I don't, we don't receive notification, uh, at the Public Health District that I'm aware of.
So what, um, is it, what rule allows for Public Health to receive those notifications?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Can you ask me that question?
Yeah, no problem. Um, so what rule, what, what is in place that allows Public Health to be notified of Ameren disconnection?
Yeah, it's the Public Utilities Act, which I would love to have a moment to actually read. Um, the Public Utilities Act, uh, is the entity that says from November through March, um, the, uh, you know, Ameren must notify, um, within 24 hours of shut off addresses of where they're going to be doing shut offs. And actually, in speaking with Public Health, my understanding is that's largely done, um, for their HIV-positive, um, work. So they really use it to identify as someone who is HIV positive, or are they about to have their power shut off, and what does that mean? Um, but we've now expanded that, um, with, you know, CU Public Health has very much embraced wanting to take a more expansive look at, you know, how to use that list and, um, to support it. So I know the City of Champaign did do mailings of the first list that I sent them. They, they mailed to folks. Um, we, like I said, mailed, but I, I really, I would love to get some information about the water shut offs and, uh, report back to you.
Okay, so it sounds to me like the public act on utilities doesn't cover water. It only covers power. Is that, is that accurate?
Uh, uh, we, I am not aware of water shut offs being sent to CU Public Health, and I think I would have been made aware.
Okay, all right. My, my second question has to do with, um, the additional assistance that you've been giving households for homeless. And so right now, we have 60 homeless people who are on general assistance. Is that number, how does that intersect with the 19 households that you helped in October? Does that mean that 60, that 19 of those households of the 60 were assisted?
So the way it works, so, uh, 18 applications for subsidized housing in October is what we do is we have a list that is only our participants. So you have to be a general assistance participant to get housing advocacy, because we just don't have the resources to go beyond that. Um, and we prioritize by the most vulnerable. So the longest they've been housed, they have a disability, there's some, um, risk. Uh, you know, obviously, being homeless is a risk right now. But, uh, you know, we, we rank folks, and then we start at the top and, um, have a group, you know, different interns will case manage different folks. And we will, um, screen for, you know, are they, do they have a documented disability? Are they a senior citizen? Do they have children? And then as opportunities open up, we call through everyone and help them apply. So what we, here's the trick, Mary Alice, is if we could just take a point in time of who's homeless, and then we could just work with that population, you will see the numbers go down over time because we'll keep be, moving people into housing. The problem is, is that, um, although we do have a, a rental, uh, a, um, eviction moratorium, we're seeing an increase in domestic violence cases. So that generates, uh, greater homeless population. Um, and we're also seeing situations where, um, there's family conflict that I wouldn't call a domestic violence situation, where the people voluntarily separate. Um, and so what we're, um, and we're seeing people laid off from work. Um, and they're not able to pay their portion of the bill with their housemate, so their housemate kicks them out. Right, so these are all, it, the kinds of, um, loss of housing that we're seeing under COVID. We've seen several illegal loss of housing. We've, um, and they both have been with the properties that lost rental assistance, or lost the rental assistant, rental, um, registration with the city of Urbana. We've seen two illegal evictions of families, so I've been working with that, and Land of Lincoln. So I, you know, but generally speaking, we have not seen a bunch of, um, we haven't seen landlords evicting folks. So, so as a result, we see the homeless population floating up and down, and we don't have a fixed number. What we do know is that we can take our population, we know how long they've been on our housing advocacy list, and we can reduce the, the people who are on that list, um, get them off the list and, uh, the housing. Um, and that, we, you know, we've been tracking the numbers with that piece.
So is it fair to say that there are more than 60 people on that housing advocacy list?
Um, there, yes, there's 60 people plus, I would say, um, a few, I would say it's, I could actually look it up. It's, I would guess it's about 75. It's, everyone is homeless. And, um, we have some folks where they are very precariously housed or, um, they have some level of risk. And so we've added them to the list.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? One thing I would add, um, Danielle talked about it. We learned, what we learned last week in conversations with Ameren is November is a very critical month because from December through March, there's a mandatory moratorium on utility shut offs. But November is the time when the utilities are required to notify Public Health, and yet there's no, um, mandatory mor- moratorium. So that's why these shut offs are happening September, October, and then into November. So, and it could be very cold. We've been really lucky with, you know, 70-degree temperatures, but it could be, last year, we had snow, so.
Yeah, Wednesday, Wednesday evening.
Yeah, so November's a very critical month. Um, any other, any other reports to add? Wayne, or Bill, you had a question?
I just, I just wanted to say thanks, Danielle, for, for really, um, taking that up. And I think, you know, utility shut offs are always bad, especially bad now during COVID. But I think going forward, um, in future years, now that we know this, we'll be able to do more in November when utility shut off time comes around, now that we know that the notification is there. Uh, we'll be able to get people connected with programs better, um, either the townships or nonprofits, or whoever is able to do that. But now that we know that there's a mechanism, and that, I think that's great. That, it's just gonna be, there, there are gonna be some positive things to come out of this COVID thing. But, um, just, thanks a lot for, for really getting into that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. First item is Resolution Number T 2020-09-012R, which is a resolution setting compensation of Cunningham Township officials for the four-year term, beginning May 15th, 2021. That includes the Township Supervisor, Town Clerk, Town Board, and beginning January 1st, 2022, for the Township Assessor.
Yeah, and just a heads up, I think the clerk sent you the corrected resolution. There are two options on the table, and the corrected one was the 1.5%. So just make sure you're looking at those.
Is there any, Jared?
Uh, I'd go ahead and make a motion, uh, that we pass. I mean, I don't know if we need to say what the differences were between, uh, those two, the one that we have online and the other one, uh, in the motion, because we know that we have the corrected version of it going, uh, going to be passed. But, um, in any, in any case, uh, I'll move Resolution Number T dash 2020 dash 09 dash 012R for approval.
A second.
Okay, is there discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I know that, uh, um, Danielle, you've talked about, uh, wanting to bring the salaries of the Township Supervisor and Assessor up to more of a power with, uh, neighboring communities. Is that a concern, um, also that, um, you feel is like a, a very important thing to solve?
So.
Relative to where we've been before?
I, I addressed this in my public memo, which is on the clerk's website. Um, uh, and it's the reason we offer you two options. I think, uh, the only thing that I would speak to is, uh, I guess I can tell my story, which is that when I, uh, was asked to run for the supervisor's position, it was a five-figure pay-in decrease for me personally. Um, and I initially said, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna do this. I'm not gonna take a five-figure pay decrease. Um, you know, I was looking for other organizing jobs that were a little closer to home. Um, and, uh, and then I got some legal counsel to see, you know, could I do contract work on the side to make, uh, for it? As long as I'm, you know, fulfilling my full-time duties at the township, um, it is, my understanding was that I could do that. Um, frankly, the job, it does not, I mean, I did contract work at some point. I certainly haven't had any time to do any of that contract work for over a year. Um, and so I'm not gonna be in this position forever. That's, that was my opinion before I started. And it, I would say, regardless of the salaries, so I just want to be clear about that, is I really see this as a position where I can give to my community while my son is small. Um, and I can be close to him and close to his school. Um, there's a personal sacrifice that comes with that. I'm fine with that sacrifice. I took that sacrifice. My concern is, um, uh, I am, I am really growing the township in significant ways where it is never going to go back to being, um, such a marginal, um, piece of the local equation. And, um, I feel Wayne has done the same. We really have, like, breathed new life into the township. Um, and so my concern is really about kind of what happens after me. Like, will, will the next person who can really manage state grants, who can, um, supervise, you know, 14 full-time equivalents, who can manage an internship program, who can, you know, manage a larger levy? Will you be able to retain that person, paying them at a level that no other city staff member who supervises a person gets paid? That's my question to you. Your lowest-paid city staff member, um, who supervises someone other than an intern, correctly, if I'm wrong, I think makes $85,000. So I just, um, I am fine. I feel like put in an uncomfortable position of having to, like, speak about my salary. I'd prefer not to, frankly. But I guess to speak to my concern as a policymaker is that the, the level that the supervisor has been paid, um, reflects the quality that you got before me, um, in supervision. Um, and I don't, and I really think that you should, as a town board, consider making sure that you have a competitive and comparable salary structure. We put that forward with a lot of thought in terms of really trying to figure out who our comps are. Um, we tried to do that in a very, like, honest and authentic way, because you requested it. Um, and it shows that, you know, that these positions are underpaid. And I think if you look at the, the division heads, or even the people under the division heads, or even the people under the people under the division heads, you're still looking at salaries that are higher than what these two positions are paid. So my interest is in the sustainability of the township. And I am somebody who really, I, it just really disgusts me when I see public officials paid, you know, like, exorbitant salaries. And so on some level, you know, one option would be, you know, fix it in four years when I'm gone, so to speak. And I'd be okay with that, but I guess I would share my picture of it as well, which is that when I came into this job, I really thought the only way I can afford it, given what I had been making and what I'm worth on the market, was to do contract work. Like, that's where we were at. So, um, yeah, so that's my honest answer to your question, Dennis.
And I just want to add, um, you know, I don't look at the salary as, as my salary, it's the, it's the assessor's salary. And, you know, there could come a time where, uh, Danielle and I are together, and we're on the same bus. And we get hit by a bus or whatever, or something could happen. And you guys are gonna be in a position to hire somebody to fill the positions. And you guys, you all are gonna be in a position, are not gonna be in a position to negotiate the salary because the salary is whatever you set it at today. And there's always talk of, uh, of consolidating the township into the city. But I think we've shown through Danielle's memo that the salaries that city managers get are, are much higher than what we get now, and even what we've proposed on the higher end versus the lower end.
Well, I do appreciate, um, your feedback. And I certainly, I, I appreciate, uh, the personal story, uh, aspect to it because it certainly makes it more real. Uh, the, uh, city, the town, the, the voters just recently increased the township's, uh, property tax limit rate, uh, which, is some of that, is that, is that, uh, funding applicable to covering, uh, Township Supervisor and Assessor salaries? It, it can be applied for that? Am I correct?
Well. Though, to speak to the levy increase, we have pledged that the levy increase be used for assistance. Assistance comes in both the form of general assistance and the, the staff and support to, to administer that. I think the Town Board should always, um, pay a close eye, as any board should, in the balance between administrative costs and direct assistance cost. Um, I think if you compare us to our sister city, uh, you should look at their budget. You'll see that our assistance, um, that we offer is just, the percentage is so much higher, a pi- piece of the pie, um, uh, than our comparables. And I would like, I would like to encourage us to keep it that way. Um, and I, you know, I've worked hard to, uh, both accommodate staff's requests for, you know, being in school and working part-time. And frankly, I think. And frankly, I think the town board has gotten a great value out of the supervisor's staff because I have a number of people who want to work part-time and be going to school. And they, you know, there's not such a high cost in terms of the benefits. So, you know, to answer your question, yeah, I think, what it said, the Cliff Singers say all money is green. And it's really important that you look at the whole picture and make sure that you're making judicious use of those dollars. I certainly try to use every dollar I can to serve the poor. And part of that is making sure that I have staff who are compensated adequately, have healthcare, you know, who can do the job and, and are gonna stick with me. And I've had almost no, I've had not as, I've had one staff member leave the entire time I've been working because I, I hope that I've created a, a workplace that people really want to be at and stay at.
Okay, thank you. I think you've covered my question really thoroughly.
Mary Alice.
Um, so, you know, I, I was the one who initially started to talk about in terms of where that the baseline should be. And I think one of the things that we achieved with this is putting the township supervisor and the township assessor at the same pay rate. And certainly for years, that's been different. So I like that. I, right now, and I just want to clarify for the public because there were in, in the packet, there were two different versions of 12R. And I believe what we're, I just want to confirm that what we're talking about is the one that has the, the base at $68,009. And it goes up to $72,176. The other one was, was primarily because there was some conversation for the past couple of months in terms of where we stand with other townships and so forth. You know, and I've had this conversation with, with Wayne. We do face uncertain budget times. And for example, the University of Illinois, they're not giving any raises. So we're not, I, I would not expect us to have any cost of living raises for the foreseeable future until something is figured out. So I, I think that this is a nice compromise in terms of bringing the supervisor and the assessor up to the same amount, giving a small cost of living percentage-wise for, over the course of four years for the, for the assessor and five years for the township supervisor. So that, that's kind of where I stand. I know I spoke last time that we were asking for taxpayers to pay more money and, and thankfully they did agree to that. But I also think that we need to be cautious in terms of increasing our administrative costs so that we really are using all those funds for the purpose that we want, which is to bring services to the community.
Sharice.
Um, I think my question is more about the, the township board stipend, I guess, because I was under the impression that the township board did not take a stipend.
Yeah, so the township board four years ago chose to zero out its stipends. I think in prior decades, it had a, a, a small stipend. And in the memo I sent last week and in the, the memo that is included in the packet, I argue for reinstating the compensation, partly because I, I feel like we're asking a lot more of you. It used to be, you may remember when town board meetings were five minutes, but you only were serving 26 people. You're now serving 2,000 people. It looks like 2,500 this year, right? That's Urbana residents. So your, your meetings are gonna be longer. And my concern is that working class fixed income student and single parent residents who provide this public service need compensation to cover their childcare and time costs. And so I had suggested 60 at the last meeting. You all had suggested 50. So I dropped the, um, resolution down to that suggestion. I do want to note that you're gonna have about 14 meetings a year. So because there's the annual meeting and we almost always have at least one special meeting. So that comes to $700. And for administrative purposes, we'd love to just pay that out quarterly instead of, you know, every two weeks you get a tiny little check. So anyway, that is the recommendation, but it is the town board's decision on what you want to do. That is just our recommendation to you.
Also, to clear up any confusion, whoever moved it, I think probably needs to save the salaries unless for anything's otherwise. For each year and position.
You mean to, for, for the stipend to increase every?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a motion yet on the floor.
Jared moved it. And I
Oh, okay. I didn't write that down. Okay. Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. Okay. Jared, you want to clarify, you, to clarify, you moved the resolution that has the prorated salary at $68,009 for the remainder of, from May 17th to December 31st, 2021. And then it goes from $69,030 to $72,176 for the supervisor. And the same for the assessor?
Uh, I believe so. That was my intention.
Okay. Dennis.
So as per the conversation about the township board, us as acting as township board. Yeah, we would, we would, we were getting a stipend before Joyce Smythe suggested that for the amount of work we were doing, he'd rather see the funds serve the community rather than to serve us. And our, our meetings were certainly shorter and less involved. I just will offer that I, I don't think that the township necessarily needs to be supported by a community funds. We meet as a township sort of through the grace of the fact that we're also city council members. You do receive a stipend for that work. I would be willing to forego income as a township board member. Or to reduce it to like $30 a meeting or 25 bucks a meeting. I think that's plenty to cover the half hour, the 45 minutes that we spend talking once a month. So I would like to have a conversation about whether we can just forego being paid. Or do we need to actually be paid as much as 60 or $50 a month for you, for these meetings? To me, it seems that, and I don't have a gigantic income myself, but the idea of public service, especially at the township level is a different one. So I'm not I'm willing to forego it.
Jared and then Bill.
I did want to clarify. I thought that 72 was the higher one. I meant the higher one, the one that starts with the second one with 6809. Second year, 75, 634, and then ending with 78, 910. I apologize. I thought we were talking about that one. Just to
Can I clarify, Bill? Is that what you meant to second?
No, not at all. That was, that, that wasn't the recommendation we made last, last meeting.
Was it? It was, oh, okay.
So I withdraw my second.
I did, I made that motion, so.
Is there a second for the motion for the higher salaries? Apparently that motion dies for the lack of a second. Would someone care to make a new motion? Mary Alice?
I'll, I'll make a motion for resolution number T 2020 09 012R for approval, which starts the township supervisor at a paraded rate of $68,009. Ends for both the township assessor and the township supervisor at $72,176 for the year of 2025.
Second.
So that was moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Okay, Jared.
I did just want to bring up from Dennis's comments about the $700, as I had originally made the same comment last, last meeting or whenever we last discussed this, Dennis, about thinking, you know, that we, that we would just forego, forego it because I, I know that I, I, I personally don't need it, but I don't remember who made the, who made the point. Maybe it was Danielle, that, you know, just because I or you or any of us in particular are in a, are in a financial situation today that we don't need to worry about those things. It would be unwise for us to make that decision for the next four years for the next people who may sit in, sit in these positions who may need that. And, you know, if we get it, I'm sure I can set my, my direct deposit up at the township to go right into the angel donor funds, and I intend to do so. Should I end up serving on the town board again? So that was, I, that convinced me because I thought, well, why are we, why are we adding it? We didn't have it. We haven't had it for four years. We didn't need it. Why are we adding it? But I think that providing it for somebody who may need it, who may not be in our situation and not us making the decision to take it away from them now, I think that would be unwise. So I would still support keeping it, albeit if folks want to talk about reducing it, I'm, I'm open to that. I don't think, you know, 50 bucks is, is too, is too much. And, you know, if you want to get a good babysitter, that, that can certainly cost you $50 an hour. So anyway, those are my thoughts on, on that part.
I would also clarify that the fourth year that the town board salary is in effect is $700 and not $7,000. So that was corrected in, in the memo as well. Okay. Were there other comments? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I just, I would agree that with Danielle, that the town board is spending more time now. And it's not just the half hour, hour during the meeting. It's the 40 or 50 pages of, of reading you do before the meeting. And when it comes to budget time, that's always a big discussion. A lot of times the social service funding involves quite a bit of research too. So I think it's probably worth paying the town board something. But I, you know, four years ago, I was in favor of taking it away because the meetings were short and, you know, town board wasn't doing as much. And Dennis won't be on the town board next year. I won't. But I think, you know, for the people that are on, it makes sense to pay a little more for the town board meetings.
But by the way, I'd like to add, it's already been an hour.
Yeah.
We're, we're well aware of that.
The other thing, just if we, if you want to start, you know, splitting hairs and making it $40 or something, the more time we talk about it, we have like 10 staff on comp time right now. So we're just spending staff time talking about it. So we're gonna spend up more time, end up spending more staff time than, than it's worth savings.
Are there any other comments? Are you ready to vote? Okay. Well, the clerk, please call the roll. So we have, and just to clarify, we have a motion on the floor for the lower of the two proposals with the corrections as sent out this afternoon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll say, okay. Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, and under new business, we have resolution T 20-11-021R, which is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the City of Urbana for emergency solutions grant COVID for CTSO's rapid rehousing bridge to home program.
So briefly, but it's also very exciting. Now, we plan, we've been in the planning phase for about three months of a new rapid rehousing program for the homeless called Bridge to Home. And we are positioned to receive up to $220,000 in ESG funds. We intend to reapply for ESG funds next year. These are COVID funds, but we intend to apply for the standard. It is a gap in our community. We don't have enough organizations in Champaign County applying for ESG funds and providing rapid rehousing. So township has stepped into that space. This would allow us to partner with the City of Urbana to receive that emergency solutions grant, which we think will come any day now. So this will kind of pre-authorize me to sign it and get things moving.
Great. We get a motion to get this item on the floor. Jared?
I'll make that motion. I'll move resolution number T 2020 dash 11 dash 21R, resolution authorized supervisor to sign an agreement with City of Urbana for an emergency solutions grants for CTO's rapid rehouse, bridge to home program be approved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Let's have further discussion. Mary Alice.
So Danielle, you had said that the grant was like 230,000. Is that right?
So it's 220,000 if we receive both round one and round two ESG COVID funds. We've been approved so far for round one, and you'll see that the dollar figure is 128.7 in the agreement. And then we expect round two to come shortly.
So this resolution would allow you to, to cover, to do both rounds?
Actually, just, it would only allow us to cover round one because we haven't even been approved by continuum of service providers, the homeless, because of various process things with IDHS. So we will come back to you for round two.
Okay, so this is really 129,000.
Yes, it's 128.7 is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And I can't, I can't emphasize enough how much time that the township and the city's grants management and economic development staff spend applying for funds, processing funds, administering these COVID grants. It's an exhausting, complicated process. And it's, you know, it's rewarding in that the funds come to the city, but it is not without an enormous amount of work.
Yes, the, the city takes the administrative fee from it, and we are eternally grateful to Sheila Dodd and Alyssa Jajay, who have done a great job of partnering with us on this and helping us navigate those systems.
Yeah, they've, they've become experts. Okay, next up is resolution number T 2020 11-022R, which is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement, NJS Enterprises for Case Management Software.
So we will submit this and the last one that you approved last month to, for Cure Act funding. But as I increase staff, we're not able to actually do our jobs because we don't have enough access to case management seats. So I'm adding another seat. And both the staff members' time and the, the seats should be eligible under Cure Act based on my conversations with DCO. So I'm just asking for your approval.
Bill Brown?
I'll move approval of resolution number T 2020-11-022R, resolution authorized supervisor to sign an agreement with NJS Enterprises for Case Management Software.
Second.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that second to Sharice this time. So moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution T 2020-11-023R, resolution authorizing Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract for flexible spending account for health insurance coverage with key benefit administrators.
So each year we request approval to set up the, to renew the FSA. We've had it for two years now. And it allows our staff to realize how pre-tax benefit in their health savings accounts.
There are motion to put this item on the table, on the floor.
Oh, go ahead, Sharice. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I should have raised my hand. I'll move for resolution T 2020 11-0 023R, resolution authorizing the Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract for flexible spending account for health insurance coverage with key benefit administrators for approval.
Okay, I'll do the seconding then.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
So Danielle, I didn't look up what we did last year. Is this the same rate for flexible spending accounts that we had for last year, the 2750?
I think
It's the same rate for this year.
So I believe it's a, yeah.
All right.
I mean, the only thing that'll change is if there's more participation, it'll go up per participant. Or if there's less participation, it'll go down per participant. But the admin fee is the same and But the admin fee is the same and um, yeah.
But the employee amount that, that is being offered is the same as last year?
Well, we, we don't offer any financial benefit. We allow the employee to set aside up to a certain amount um, pre-tax. And then we basically just pay the admin fees, overall admin fee and then a per-participant admin fee.
Thank, thank you for that correction.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Uh, last item on the agenda is a closed session. So I believe the uh, city clerk will email, email a link to the board members. So we will leave this meeting, um, enter the closed session meeting and then we will come back into this meeting for German. Is that correct, Billis and Wendy?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll look for the uh, link in emails.
Yeah.
And we need a motion to go into the closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll second that.
Motion by Bill Colebrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
I think he left already.
Okay. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The Cunningham Township Board is currently in closed session. When they return, they will adjourn their meeting and immediately start the meeting of the Urbana City Council. Cunningham Township Board currently in closed session. It is 7:59.
The Cunningham Township Board is still in closed session. It is 8:09 PM.
Dan, are you able to see who's in the meeting?
Diane, you're muted.
I think the mayor is still muted. It looks like Wendy and Phyllis from Moncrief's office is here. The mayor is here. I'm here. Jared. Bill Colbrook, Bill Brown, Sharice Hersey, Dennis Roberts, Mary Alice, Fred Grosser. Just trying to facilitate things. Go ahead, Mayor. Can you hear us? We've lost our facilitator. I don't know if when you lose your facilitator, can Fred, you know, if a member, all we got need to do is close the meeting. So without the facilit, without the mayor, can we take a motion for a German friend?
And the mayor pro tem Dennis is the mayor pro tem and he's standing dead.
That's true. Yeah, because all you gotta do is.
Do I do that? Is there a motion then to go to leave closed session and enter an open session again?
I'm moved.
Bill Brown and who did the second?
Mary Alice.
Mary Alice Wu. All right, those are going. Okay, would you please call the roll?
I'm going to tell you the honest truth, Danielle. You don't need to call the roll for an adjournment.
Back into open session.
To back it back into open session, yeah.
All right, just a second.
I guess we have to have you call the roll.
Okay, you really must. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that we that's approved and meet you back in the main room.
Actually, you're in the main room. Yep, so you just need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
I think we can just adjourn.
Yeah, can we do it? All right, I'll just announce it. We're adjourned. Having the meeting here and finish, we're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Okey doke. Now we just have to wait for Diane to come in for the city council meeting.
Yeah, that's right. We're just hanging.
Yep. He's probably trying to find another computer or something.
Yeah, I got a signal that I couldn't enter the closed session because it was a private meeting and I couldn't get in. So I had to find a new a new access.
Oh, yeah. Well, it took it took me forever to to get in too. It was one of those things where that's why Danielle just opened up a different meeting.
That's good.
Because I kept saying, oh, yeah, there we go. We already adjourned, Diane.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, as mayor pro tem, I was allowed to.
I asked her to do that. So now we're in.
Very clever.
The council meeting, right?
It has not been called to order.
Okay, we're started. All right. I feel like I've gone through the transporter. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hersey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of October 12th and October 26th. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are. Next up, our presentations and public input. We do have a presentation summary from Sheila Dodd on housing and utility resources, and this will supplement some of the things you heard in the township meeting and and Sheila can bring you up to date on what's been happening on the city's end of things.
Good evening. So as you heard through Danielle's presentation, there is just a lot going on in the community and it's kind of ever changing. But thankfully, there's a good group of us, Danielle, the county, City of Champaign, social service agencies that are working together to try to provide as much assistance as we can. So I provided an outline of the utility assistance that is available through the LIHEAP program. And probably gave a little more detail than than was necessary, but as prepared as people can be when they go to these agencies for assistance, the quicker the assistance is. So if you share this information with others, I wanted you to have as complete information as you could. One side note on the LIHEAP, it can be combined with a program that Ameren has. So LIHEAP will provide up to, I believe it's $1,800 in assistance. And if your arreage is greater than that, then Ameren can help with a one of their programs. So I heard some discussion on the water bills. And according to the most recent update on Ameren's or Illinois American Water's site, they are providing up to $200 assistance for anyone regardless of income. And if you are lower income, they will not shut your utilities off. You just need to contact the Illinois American Water Company and let them know what's going on. They have what they call an H2O Help to Others program that is administered through the Salvation Army in this area. So if you reach out to them or refer people to reach out to them, then they will hopefully keep from getting their water shut off. There are a couple of different housing assistance programs. The city of Urbana has ours that council approved in, I believe in June, we've provided assistance to over 30 families and continue to get applications on this program. All of them that we've received requests from our renters, although it is open to homeowners as well. And then we have a transitional housing program too, that we were kind of leaving our units vacant. They just happened to become vacant about the time that COVID hit and we wanted to have them available in case police or fire needed them for quarantine and have talked with them recently and they were like, you know, we can offer them back out to the community for rental units. So those are now available too. And then we've partnered with the Regional Plan Commission to offer a tenant-based rental assistance program. So if the clients go through our housing assistance program for three months and then they continue to need assistance, that program will come kick in and help them for month four on. So Regional Plan Commission also has a program called their COVID-19 Relief Program. It is again designed to help families with low income and it helps anyone within Champaign County. And so I would encourage you to reach out to that link at the helpillinoisfamilies.com to start the application program. And then as Danielle mentioned, the township has housing assistance. The Emergency Solutions Grant, while it's effective starting July 1, we still are waiting our contracts, although I feel like we're very very close to getting them. And so the state has said that, you know, we could start accepting applications and moving forward on our program. And that program for her will be called Bridge to Home and it provides rapid rehousing services to homeless men, women, and families. And then I would just encourage, if you know somebody in the community that needs assistance, to reach out either through township, Champaign County Regional Plan Commission, or the Grants Management Division, because if we can't provide assistance, we're in close contact with each other so that we can refer people back and forth. And then finally, I listed the immigrant resources that are provided by YMCA. That depends upon the funding source and I am not as familiar with the programs that they have, but if you reach out to Lelina at the YMCA, she would be able to direct families who need assistance and let them know what resources are available. And then there's always 211 for help with available resources. If you contact them, they can provide up-to-date information on the resources available. So that's just a quick overview. Jared?
Sheila, when we were in township, a minute ago, Danielle was telling us that they ended up paying for somebody who didn't get into LIHEAP because they did not have physical social security cards, but in your memo, it just says social security numbers. Do you know if physical cards or copies of them are necessary to apply for LIHEAP?
I do not. I'm assuming they've done this program a long time and I'm assuming that if they're if they say they're required, then they're required. The federal guidelines which funds these programs are constantly changing and you know, I require copies of the physical social security cards for the programs that the city runs.
I'm just, I'm just thinking we might maybe want to update that memo to say not just numbers, but physical copies or physical cards are required.
I will confirm with RPC and then I will do that because that information was taken from their website. So I don't want to misstate anything or correct it. There, there may be something going on that I'm just not aware of. So I'll check with RPC and then update it.
Okay, thank you.
Necessary.
Any other questions for Sheila?
Good job.
Sharice?
Um, Jared was just talking about a memo that I don't, it doesn't look like I got the memo. I don't think the memo is actually in the packet, but it's online because I couldn't find it in the packet either. Well, I've looked on, I've looked in my, in my, in my, is it online or is it in my email?
It should be online, but I can email it to you too.
I'm looking, I was looking in my email so that if I can, I can find it online.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
It's connected to the agenda, Sharice, online.
Oh, okay.
You'll see a presentation.
Okey dokey. Thanks.
Mary Alice?
I just, I want to say that this is kind of an example of all these people working behind the scenes. We have Sheila, we have township, we have RPC. We have a lot of organizations that have really come together during COVID and really appreciative of all the all of the people that we have in our community who are working so hard to ensure that people have access to the utilities, people have access to housing, food, the Bucket Brigade that Township is doing. So I think it's good, Sheila, I want to call you out specifically because I know that you've been working a lot with these grants, but of course Township is doing a lot of hard work with this as well. But I just really think it speaks well for our community in terms of all the resources that we have and all the number of people who are trying to pull everything together for our community. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Sheila, and she'll make sure you each have a copy of these resources and then please share, please share widely.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next up is public input. I wanted to read instructions before we begin. The public input rules are listed on the agenda for city-sponsored meetings. Member of the public can join meetings either as a Zoom webinar, telephone participant to make verbal input. This is a time for the council members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, commentary won't take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting, may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole to maintain respect for the process, respect for members of the council, city staff, and general public. The meeting chair, a member of the public body, has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone. We'll ask the speaker to send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record. The meeting record closes at adjournment of the meeting. Thank you for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. I see Reverend Evelyn Underwood. Dr. Underwood, can you unmute your microphone?
Mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I think I lowered my hand. Did I lower my hand?
No, it's still up, but if you prefer not to speak, that's fine.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining the meeting. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me? Yep.
Yes, we can hear you.
Much appreciated. Can you put the clock up, please? Thank you. So the Illinois Commerce Commission in their September 4th letter to all the corporate utilities mentioned specifically how they were asking them to adopt the winter moratorium conditions early. What we have right now are slightly more expansive than the winter moratorium protections and the data shows that it's not working. Let me repeat, 6,543 shut offs from Ameren in one week alone. Over 150 shut offs in Champaign-Urbana in one week alone. The winter requirements as provided by illinoislegalaid.org lists the following things. You must communicate with the utility at least six business days before the scheduled shut off date. That's actually worse than the voluntary moratorium than we have. Second, they cannot ask you to pay more than 10% of the money as a down payment and you have four months to pay what you owe. That is much more restrictive than the COVID protections. You have to tell the government agencies that you need to apply for LIHEAP and you need to follow through. People in this state are eligible for LIHEAP at twice the count data relative to last year. Ameren and ComEd alone amount to over 2 million, when last year there were only 900,000 and change eligible households for LIHEAP. And I want to actually just segue because I've mentioned these details before. So I'm just going to play Julie Pride talking to Carol Ammons on the radio.
Need to understand that with, if we don't have a mandatory utility shut off moratorium, these protects, so that these protections are automatic. These social service agencies and government agencies that are already supposed to be doing this are just overwhelmed. They didn't get any additional staff. You know, they have people in isolation and quarantine and it, I'm really concerned. We have to keep people housed because we know that if utilities are shut off, often that means the family is going to temporarily move in with another family and during a time of COVID, that is not something we want.
So the main thing that you have to understand here is that anything less than proactive full measures is setting us up for failure. In control theory, we have this basic concept called lag time. That is to say, when you want to reach a set point, when you want to reach a desired set of conditions such as protecting your community, you reacting to the circumstances rather than proactively acting to those circumstances will cause catastrophe. We usually refer to it as a system going unstable, by the way. So the main thing that I want to impress upon you tonight is that anything that you were told about the winter moratorium was done so at best out of naivete and at worst in bad faith. In the in the same strain as Governor JB Pritzker's statement in Champagne a little over a week and a half ago, where he said, "I don't have the power to issue a moratorium like that." He has the power to issue a moratorium, but by saying "like that", he was able to shift the focus of discussion to specifically apply to a multi-month-long moratorium, such as the Illinois Commerce Commission does. This is not a time for word games, this is a time to protect our residents. So I want to also read to you a statement that was sent to the Chicago Tribune, because there is a rumor going around about heat protections. It is not too early to address the question, this is in regard to the protections, since moratorium heating requirements ordinances have already taken effect. This is in Chicago. The minimum temperatures are generally set by local ordinance. And to determine what the minimum standards are and when the year the standards apply, you simply have to contact the municipal offices to which you live. Respect your AFSMI staff's labor and give them the right instructions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Mayor Marlin, I'm concerned with your poor leadership and decision-making that have resulted in WART-2 once again being without a representative. You made a wrong decision in appointing Julie Laut to be on city council. You received multiple letters in support of Christopher Hansen from people who could speak to his passion, involvement and investment in local government and policing issues, exactly what is needed right now. You received zero letters of support for Julie Laut. Hansen has demonstrated active engagement in city council and boards and commissions. Instead, you chose Julie Laut, who, when I suggested-
Ms. Chong, this is not the time to discuss a past decision like that, and it's not a time to be talking about Ms. Laut, who has stepped down from the council. Now, is there an issue you wish to discuss?
I'm talking about your decisions.
Then that's not- Have that conversation. Jason Leggett, can you mute the speaker? Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hansen. I live in Urbana. I've been trying to figure out how to fix all the things that went broken under the guidance of Mayor Marlin. And I think a big part of the problem is poor decision-making in regards to hiring and city appointments. It seems like we're constantly hiring people who only know how to work for themselves and their friends in the city, and not for the people of Urbana. So let's kind of rewind a bit and look at when Marlin had Preston James running the civilian police review board. That was riddled with violations and failures on Mr. James' part.
Mr. Hansen, Mr. Hansen, Preston James no longer works for the city. Please keep your comments addressed to issues or topics on the agenda or general items. But you don't need to be attacking or bullying against people who work for city or former employees.
Okay, I'm about to explain, I'm about to explain how that's relevant. The issue was that James was a retired Urbana police officer, and having a retired Urbana police officer run the civilian police review board seems like a conflict of interest. And more to that point, it wasn't just Mr. James who was running the board, it was also Mr. James' wife, Monique James. And so you had a police officer and his wife running our civilian police board, and I wonder if there was a conflict of interest there, and we should maybe be looking at putting more independent staff. And now I see we have Lamont Peppers hired to be the new community engagement coordinator, and he's supposed to be running the civilian police review board. But my understanding is that he was friends with Preston James. And I'm trying to understand how we expect things to be any different now if we keep assigning these people who are, you know, going to follow a path of dishonesty.
Mr. Hansen, there is no evidence for a path of dishonesty, and I'm going to ask you to finish your comments by sending them in an email. Next up is Erin Umberger.
Can you hear me?
Are you there, Erin?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Erin Umberger. I live in Champagne. As a means to demonstrate how, this is just a little bit more information about Ameren that I discovered recently. As a means to demonstrate how Ameren is treating the customers in Illinois, I would like to read a story that someone from Danville sent to me about their experience with the company recently. Quote, "Ameren called me saying my service is in danger of being cut off. I told the representative that I have an appointment with Community Action, which is the organization that processes LIHEEP applications in Danville. But he insisted that I needed to schedule a payment plan. I said I could pay some on Thursday when I get paid. He said the 27th. I was driving, so I, again, I said Thursday. It was the 27th and okay. Thursday was okay, was actually the 29th, so they turned it off on the 28th. I called Ameren and explained I have an appointment scheduled with the Community Action, and I could pay $150 the next day, Thursday. They said they would not turn it back on until it was paid in full. My Community Action appointment was still seven days away, and they couldn't get me in any quicker, even though I was without power. An amazing person paid my bill in full, and amazing my power turned on within 30 minutes of the bill being paid. Why they couldn't turn it on for the, for the one day until I got paid, it was ridiculous. I hope my difficulties with Ameren can help someone else that have to go through the same," end quote. All right, so also, I was told by an Ameren customer service representative a few days ago that the Fresh Start program has ended. That is the program that was for, supplemental for people that qualified for LIHEEP, and that wasn't enough, and it was for people that didn't qualify for LIHEEP. So this means that for those whom, which LIHEEP was not enough, and for those, like I said, the only option left for, for anybody is deferred payment programs through Ameren. The only other option I do have is a program called Cool Neighbors, Warm Friends, however, where other people struggling during a pandemic can donate what's left of their money to a multi-billion dollar company, so that they can give it to those, those whose power they are threatening to disconnect and presumably write off on their taxes. On the website, they make it clear that this program is, quote, "a helping hand, not a handout." To encourage personal responsibility, our program often requires customers to share in the weatherization improvement costs and making matching payments on their energy bills," end quote. So a little bit of tough love, I guess. This program is where the funds from Fresh Start, the program that's ran out, came from. Just so you know. Please feel free to verify this with Ameren yourself to make sure this information is correct and up to date. I'm just saying this to remind the council how little Ameren appears to care about its customers during this time that everyone's struggling, and how important a local moratorium is for folks that are struggling. Please ask to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next up is Bo David Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. So I wanted to kind of, I talked a little bit about this in Cunningham Township, but I wanted to continue talking about Ameren shut-offs. So like I said, in Cunningham Township, there was about over 200 disconnect notices in Champagne County. About 100 of them being within the city limits of Urbana. Like I said, we can't really gamble on whether these folks were able to pay their bill or not, because if they get their power disconnected, like Daniel Chenoweth and Julie Pride pointed out from the Champagne, Urbana Public Health District. You know, if they have to then find shelter with somebody else and double or triple up in some household during a pandemic that spreads like wildfire, we have a very, very bad situation on our hands here. And I, you know, we can only do so much, like our ragtag team of volunteers and activists going around and talking door-to-door, calling people, you know, I'm trying my best to do what I can. The fact, the cold, hard truth is, though, is I will not get everybody. And there's already people who have had their power shut off, had their utility shut off. I mean, heck, I even learned from one person today that there was a woman in Urbana who had her, her American Illinois water disconnected her water. Fortunately, she was able to get aid because of another person, like that one person in Danville that Erin Umberger had mentioned, so that she could get her water back. But the problem is, is that not everybody has the finances to be able to offer such immediate charity. Cunningham Township can do, is doing, trying their best to, and they have, like Danielle had said, have put in several people hours into this, but it's not going to be enough. There will be people who get their power, their utilities disconnected. And during a pandemic, this is just not the time to have this. It's not ever the time to have this, but especially not during a pandemic. So while I thank everyone and all the organizers for their labor and their solidarity, it's, we need more than that right now. I appreciate what you've done, Mayor Marlin, with approaching Governor JB Pritzker with the resolution. And I continue, I continue to ask everyone on council to push him on this, because the more people that we have pushing him on this, the more he will have to listen. And now that we have the mayors of Urbana and Champagne signed on to that one letter that Julie Pride had drafted, that is a very powerful statement coming from one of the most, you know, most prestigious, I would say biggest cities downstate of Chicago. That being said, we can't wait on him to try and, to try and solve this problem for us. We need him to, we need him to enact a mandatory moratorium. But the one thing that you can do to help your constituents greatly right now is to include the emergency ordinance that Urbana, sorry, that Champagne has in Urbana's emergency ordinance. And that is Champagne Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Section 39, Part 26, which states that the city government can require the continuation of utility services for those who live in the city of Champagne. But for this one, it can be the city of Urbana. Section 1239, after the declaration of an emergency, "The mayor may, in the interest of public safety and welfare, make any or all the following orders and provide the following direction." And in Part 26, it says, "require the continuation, termination, disconnection or suspension of natural gas, electrical power, water, sewer, communications or other public utilities or infrastructure." So I please ask that you consider adding that in there, and you can take, you can take the reins of leadership compared to everyone in this state and really change a lot of people's lives for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Grace Wilken.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Grace Wilken. I'm an Urbana resident. And I did want to state some of my feelings initially. I feel more intimidated by the manner of people being shut off than the speaker's tone or comments. I consider not speaking because of the way that the mayor cut off previous speakers, but I will because I think it's important. But it seemed interesting, the irony that it was to make people feel comfortable. Just wanted to state that I don't feel that way. My comments are that I would like to say that I appreciate the work of Danielle and lots of people at the Township, and many others who are working on addressing issues in our community, like homelessness, utility shut-offs and other really important issues. Unfortunately, many people still slip through the cracks, and we need more investment in these services. Our budgeting prioritizes, or our budgeting priorities reflect our values. And I'd like to see more of this in our budgeting and how we can support these things. I'm also wondering if this Curs money, our federal coronavirus relief money, is being used for helping the community or for expanding other things or rearranging our budget. I hope to learn more about this Agenda Item 5 involving HUD authorizing funds coming in and the mayor having the authority to change the comprehensive plan. I think this plan needs to involve various stakeholders. I don't think I'm understanding this Agenda Item well, so I'm looking forward to learning more. I'm also wondering if the HUD presentation today said that there was transition housing that was left empty in case police and fire employees needed it for quarantining. That doesn't seem like an appropriate use of housing authority resources to me. I think we need to keep working on housing, food, safety and support for all of those in our community, and how our city can reflect the values that it claims to have. Some other issues, I hope that you continue to pursue measures protecting against utility shut-offs. We need protection from shut-offs and assistance with payments. Also, I hope that we continue to, or that we address the issues of blatant racism in our local systems, and that you can listen to the public. We have an engaged and valuable community, and I hope that you can listen. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Last speaker is John Kraft.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would thank Grace Wilken for her comment. It's funny how you didn't redact her name and other speakers' names for being private information. The reason why I'm saying that is because I recently asked for the names of FOIA requesters who paid funds to the city to receive their requested materials or documents. Kurt Borman denied part of the FOIA request, denied the name, saying they were private information exempted under Section 71B, which says private information unless disclosure is required by another provision of this act or state or federal law. So let me talk about another provision or state or federal law. The Illinois Constitution, Article 7, Section 1C, says that records, reports and records of the obligation receipt and use of public funds are public records available for inspection by the public according to law. The Local Records Act, Section 3A, reports and records of the obligations receipt and use of public funds are public records available for inspection by the public. And the Freedom of Information Act, Section 2 and 1/2, Mr. Kurt Borman denied it under Section 71B. But Section 2 and 1/2 says, "All records relating to the obligation receipt and use of public funds are public records subject to inspection and copying by the public." And all three of those are required under another provision of the FOIA or a state, a federal or court order. And Mayor Marlin, I wish you would do your job and tell Mr. Borman to properly answer that FOIA request. Recently, in Hancock County, the judge ruled in our favor when he forced the sheriff to provide the names of people purchasing firearms from the sheriff's sale. Why? Because that is a record pertaining to the receipt of funds to the local government. And the Attorney General, in several opinions, one where a person asked for water bills with names from the village of North Henderson. And the Attorney General said that, you know, "Records relating to public utility bills are not highly personal. Such records relate to the obligation receipt or use of public funds by local government, and therefore are expressly subject to inspection and copying by the public." And later on, they talk about whether names are private information. And the AG referred to Lieber versus Board Trustees of SIU, a Supreme Court case, that said, "Names are neither confidential nor unique. To the contrary, names are basic information." And the Supreme Court concluded, "When the legislature intended to exempt a person's identity from disclosure, it had done so explicitly. Therefore, by excluding names from the definition of private information, the General Assembly declared it did not intend for names to be exempt." So Mayor Marlin, please direct your attorney to provide the names, or, you know, we're going to have to take it another step, and I wish I wouldn't have to. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Lena Walker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, my name is Lena Walker. I'm a resident of Urbana.
Okay, good. Um, hi, my name is Lena Walker. I'm a resident of Urbana. I just had a couple of quick comments I wanted to make tonight regarding concerns about utility protections in the city of Urbana. I'd like to echo other comments that were made by Bo Barber and others that it's really crucial that the city keeps putting pressure on Governor Pritzker and doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that vulnerable people in our community are being protected, which at this point they definitely are not because folks are still getting their utility shut off. And, uh, you know, I specifically wanted to speak to some concerns I have about leaning too heavily on lie heap as a solution for community members that are facing utility shut offs because I actually used to work in customer service for a power company. So I don't have a lot of experience on the lie heap side of things, but I do have experience of the attitude and workings of utility companies around lie heap. And I can tell you that multiple times per day, I had to tell people facing shut offs that they were going to be unable to get help from lie heap. Either because they had already received assistance and were not eligible for more. Or because they didn't qualify for another reason. And typically, when folks are unable to get lie heap or that kind of funding, people are going to be instructed to either go to churches or charity organizations for help or to family and friends that can help them to pay off their balance. And that is often leaned on heavily as a solution for people and that is just not going to be enough right now. Churches have been closed for the most part, hopefully to, you know, reduce the spread of the virus, but you know, a lot of the charity collection that would normally be going on is not happening. People's families and friends are also going to be struggling. I mean, we're in a serious economic crisis and a serious public health crisis right now. So I just wanted to, to stress to the, the council that thinking that lie heap is going to be a, a, a solution for a lot of people, I, I really don't think that that's going to be the case. We really need a moratorium on utility shut offs and I applaud everything that's been done so far to try to make that happen and please keep the pressure up because we gotta do something and we gotta do it fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is a phone number that ends in four, three, five.
Good evening. Can you hear me? It's Eldra's mom in the car.
Yes, we can hear you, Eldra's car.
Good evening, Mayor Marlin and members of the city council. I'm coming to you as a concerned citizen this evening. You all have done a good job so far in advocating for families who are in crisis by corresponding with the mayor's office, or not with the mayor's office, but the governor's office. I'm going to speak a little bit about the allowable video gaming terminal permits. And I'm concerned about the families and individuals that I've talked to and who have, who have expressed their frustration with the video gaming terminals and the effects they are having on family members. Our friends who have been evicted are about to be evicted from their homes. For example, because they have used most or all of their paychecks. Some families. Some have families and others may not. But they all have in common an addiction that has gone too far and for too long. Here's some questions and concerns that I have about the proposed ordinance. Will an extra video gaming terminal save someone's job? In other words, do businesses need an extra employee to operate the terminal? Or is it self-serving? Are we concerned more about the revenue? And the welfare of the businesses? Or are we also concerned about the families in the larger community who will be negatively impacted? Is this the best decision for those families who are overextended and struggling to overcome an addiction during a pandemic when people are at risk of having their utilities shut off and being evicted from their home? Instead of opening, opening the door to more people to join Gamblers Anonymous, we should reduce the risk of more financial hardship on families. Can the city of Urbana be sued if they do not approve this ordinance? Is there no legal? No, if there is no legal ramification, then the city is not obligated legally to pass this ordinance. But in the interest of the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare of the large community, the city can make the best decision not to pass the ordinance at this time. What other alternatives are in place or can be investigated to help businesses without further burdening disadvantaged persons of the larger community? These are some concerns and questions I have as a citizen at this time and I pray that the council will consider these issues as you move forward in the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And that looks like ends our public input for tonight. So we'll move on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any report of the standing committee. Um, council member Bill Brown.
Yeah, we met last week and we forwarded one resolution and two ordinances. Two with recommendation for approval and one with no recommendation. First was Resolution number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero zero five R. Resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for Urbana Arts and Culture Program operating support for the committee. I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, trying to get this thing unmuted. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next was ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five eight. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, fourteen eleven North Lincoln Avenue. For the committee, I'll move approval. And I think Carol Mitten had an update on a question that came up.
Could we get a second first and then?
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Bill Colbert and Carol.
So there was one question that had come up last week when, when this item was before you and it was from Mr. Kraft. And he was asking about our compliance with Section three point one of the Public Officer Prohibited Activities Act, which required certain disclosures on the part of the, um, the seller of the property. And, um, the, there is a, that, that provision does not apply to home rule municipalities. And so Urbana has never required that statement to be provided and it was not provided in this case.
Any further discussion? Jared?
I know it was a sort of briefly addressed, but I just wanted to get the thoughts on the impetus for the purchase of the property at this time. I don't think we explicitly asked that at the last meeting and I know you did address that a little bit, Carol. It was from Edgar Garrett, who had sent in a comment about that as to what was the, what, what was our, you know, why, why we needed to buy it now when it seemed like, you know, there probably isn't competitive. You know, use for it's probably not going to be purchased by anybody else. We're not trying to get it away from somebody. Could you just go over that for me one more time? Thanks.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, the, the property's been on the market for a number of years. But the fact of the matter is, is that they have recently been approached. They were approached prior to us approaching them. And they were approached after we had the property under contract from another potential buyer. And I know this because it was confirmed by a broker who was involved. So there is other interest in the property, but for our purposes, we wanted to be able to have a, a site that was under our control where we could plan the, um, the new facility while keeping the existing facility operating. And since we're going to start designing that in the next, probably in the next twelve months, we wanted to know what site we were going to be designing for. So that's the, that's behind the timing of it.
And then, uh, the other, the other piece was, you know, with it being the right location, and I know Chief Louse spoke to that a little bit. One thing that I, I guess I would suggest going forward, since it's probably after the fact now, but anytime we're going to consider, especially if, you know, just in any situations professionally that I've been in where real estate has been involved and there's a purchase being considered by, by someone, especially in the instance of, uh, you know, a fire station, which probably can run use from multiple places. It would have been nice to have seen an alt one, alternative one, or an alternative two situation, uh, other than here's, here's one option and, but we're not going to give you any others that we may have considered. You know, stuff like that would have been, would have been useful for us and for the public to have known a little bit more about why this is the ideal, the ideal location.
Sharice?
I, I think the, I think that was discussed with, about with Chief Louse because of the location of where the, um, the current fire station is. And the, the area that it serves is that it allows for response time to be a lot quicker rather than trying to find another location somewhere else south, in, uh, south of where the area is. So I think the location, the reason why they wanted that, at least that was my understanding from what he said is that it, that particular fire station has served the north side of town of not just Champagne, of Urbana, but also when in the, the cases that you needed. Champagne needed assistance and it helps with all of that area.
And I, I would add one of the thing, driving interest in that site in recent months has been the closing of the Water Company Storage Lagoons and the transformation of that site into a site that can be developed. So, so suddenly the fires, the property north of the fire station was getting a lot more attention because of what was happening at the property adjacent to it. So that's another reason for, for moving on it now. Any other comments or questions? Dennis?
Well, also, it's pretty convenient because it's on a major street and connects with Bradley Avenue, which is another major route for a fast resource access to locations in the community. So, I mean, you don't get too many properties that are located on a major thoroughfare in town that are available and are appropriate for us. So we're, we're taking advantage of something that works, I think, pretty well at this time.
Jared?
Again, not arguing on the merits of the site, just making a point of alternatives were not proposed, alternatives were not shown, we were just given one option. That's all. All I'm saying is in future considerations, that's something I would, I would like to see is like, oh, hey, well, we've looked at this. You know, or here's a, you know, a breakdown of available nearby properties that would suit and their costs, et cetera, et cetera. That's all.
Sure.
Thanks.
If no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Bill?
And the last one from last week was ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five nine. An ordinance amended City Code, Chapter three, to increase a number increase a number of allowable video game terminal permits. For the committee, I'll move approval.
And I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Bill Colbert. Any discussion?
Didn't the committee send it with no recommendation?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it did send with no recommendation, but in order to get on the floor, I'll move approval.
And I'll second it.
And for the record, this is increasing currently, five is the maximum limit and this would increase it to six, which is allowed by state law. So any discussion?
Well, I just, okay. Go ahead, Dennis. You had your hand up.
No, you started talking. That's fine with me. I can.
No, I, 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 I take into consideration what Melinda Carr said. Because I've had this, those same, you know, being torn with, with that actually. And, um, it, it, it has become an issue regarding people losing their businesses because of the fact that Champagne does have, and they do allow six video gaming machines. And so people are crossing over to Champagne. And, um, it was something that, you know, it's something that I've had to struggle with regarding people's gambling addictions because I've had family members that have had gambling addictions. But the other thing that I realize with, with that in mind is that, um, no matter how we try to help our family members with that, they ultimately make the choices that they're going to make. And, um, if they're not gambling here and I, and I mean, I've had gambling members, I mean, family members that gambled in, in illegal places because they needed to gamble. And, um, it's, um, it is an addiction. I don't know if there's any way that we as a city can actually try to encourage more if there are openings someplace or someplace where Gambler's Anonymous is, I don't know if we can do that. Or if we have, if, if that's available or how we can, how we can manage that. I only know that I'm, um, six gambling, six video games versus five video games. They're going to play where they're going to play. And, uh, you know, I've, I've, I've really struggled with this decision too. So that's my comment.
Dennis?
Well, I would, I'd actually like to hear other people comment as well, but I guess, you know, the cat's out of the bag as far as local gambling in Urbana. I mean, we've already got video gaming and some, uh, some community organizations, uh, like, you know, the American Legion Post and others do it to support, you know, I would say, you know, uh, relatively important social services and organization itself. Others are, we know, they're just like businesses like, uh, like a dry cleaners or something like that, you know, and they're looking for profit. Well, um, you know, whether a person's going to have to wait in line or to sit down when they walk in to gamble, I don't think the sixth unit is going to make a significant change in people's habits. I don't want to encourage it, but I don't think that the city can necessarily legislate morals. You know, um, we don't have a blue law about, you know, alcohol sales, you know, in particular here in this community. People can go and buy whatever liquor they want to, but, and that can also be an addiction. Where I will draw a line is adding additional locations. Where I will draw a line is adding additional locations where video gaming is introduced. I think that's something that the city can rightfully monitor. You know, the fact that we've already got gaming in certain locations and we've approved it. You know, adding another, another unit probably is not going to make a difference. But there are some bars who are going through difficult times right now. And some bar owners think that this is going to be a significant income for them when they can't sell, people can't go up to the bar currently. So if we, if we think that it's important to support local taverns and those kinds of businesses in our community, which heck, a lot of people would like to go and have a good drink at a bar at this time of COVID restrictions. I don't see too much of a difference here. I don't know. So I guess I'm not real excited about it. I wouldn't promote it generally, but I'll accept it.
Okay. Any other comments? Mary Alice?
Um, I appreciate Dennis's commentary. I think I've been on the fence about this all day today in terms of whether or not, how I would vote. I, I think Dennis, you've convinced me to abstain rather than vote no. Um, I, I agree in terms of kind of holding the line in terms of more places that can have gambling. Um, but as you said, the cat is out of the bag. Gambling is legal in the state of Illinois. Um, and having five or six gaming terminals, I, I'm not sure how much difference that really makes in one specific location. That's my key sense.
Yeah, I looked at some more figures comparing, you know, places that had five before and then six in Champagne. And, and the increase from last year to this year compared to Urbana, where they had five last year and this year. And it seems to me like the biggest difference was just in the other aspects that went along in that state law that increased the increased the payout, increased the maximum bet per, you know, per punch of the video game. And increased the jackpot and things like that. Cause Urbana, it's in comparable months, you know, not counting the, the pandemic months, but in last two months anyway, Urbana's gaming places are doing 20, 25% more business and champagnes are doing 25, 30% more business. So I think maybe the ones that have six term terminals might be doing another five or 10%, but it's not a huge amount. It's not the 20%. The, the biggest change is the, the change in state law that allows us other things. There, there is one at Prospect and Bradley, that's just making money hand over fist. I guess hopefully the people can afford to lose $2 million a year there because it's more than that. It's like two, two and a half million. That's, that's really abnormal. I don't know how they do that with six machines. So I, you know, other than, uh, I, I think I agree that having new locations and making it more convenient is worse than adding one video machine to a location. I don't agree with, it's not that we're trying to let, if we voted no on this, which we, doesn't sound like we will. Uh, it's not that we're trying to legislate morals and I'm never, I've never brought that up. There's nothing immoral about gambling. There's not, it's not a sin to be poor. It's not, um, it's not a sin to have bills to pay and be offered a magic wand that might pay them. Um, you know, it's exploitation by government and by, um, you know, and by the video gambling businesses. And so that's, you know, that's the downside of gambling, legalized gambling. There's downsides to illegal gambling too, because people are going to do it. Um, and then if you don't offer it in your town, people can go next town. So that was all the arguments for allowing it to begin with. But I think we have to be careful about how, how much, how much it spans, how convenient you make it. So, yeah, one, one extra video terminal. It's, it's twine coin toss to me, but I, I, I guess, you know, the only, the only upside is to show that, you know, we want to make a level playing field, maybe with champagne, some kind of business statement. But I don't think the extra revenue that this would generate for the city would make up the difference for the extra heartache. It's going to provide our residents the extra money that's not going to be spent at local businesses because it'll go into, uh, you know, the pockets of the video game suppliers. 35% of it will go to state and we aren't getting our fair, our share from the state for infrastructure projects that this is going to support. At least not in Urbana. A lot of it's going to interstate projects. So champagne's getting a lot to build, you know, bridges over interstates and redo the I-57, I-74 interchange, but we don't seem to be getting a lot back. So just, there's, there's very low upside, very lower downside, I think, to one more terminal, but I think we do have to watch out.
Any other comments? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
I abstain.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts?
Right, I know. I'll say, I'll say yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
So we have four yeses, one no, and one abstention, and this motion passes. Uh, reports of special committees. Thank you, Bill, for the report out. I don't think we have any committee reports, reports of officers. I do want to, to remind the public that the listening sessions on and Zoom sessions that have been scheduled for getting public input on our use of force policy are this week on November 12th from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. Um, that's one especially geared toward hearing from young people. And then there's another one on November 12th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And a session on November 13th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. The Zoom link and information about these are, can be found on the city's homepage. So we invite everyone who has an interest in the use of force policy to please participate in these sessions. Mary Alice?
Are those going to be recorded?
Um, yes, I hope so. Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, okay, we'll move on to new business. We have appointments to the Urbana Free Library Board. I'm bringing forth two appointments. The first is Gloria Yen. She's the director of the New American Welcome Center at the University YMCA. She's been actively involved as an Urbana Free Library patron, former staff member, community partner, and looks forward to raising the visibility of the library through advocacy. She currently serves on the Illinois Department of Human Services Advisory Council. And I would add she has very deep ties and direct links to the immigrant community. Oh, and there's Gloria. Welcome. Second appointment to bring forward is Mark Pelmore is a 20-year resident of Urbana, an Urbana High School alumni. He's a US Army veteran. He's an entrepreneur and author who's involved in personal and interpersonal portable skill development. He has volunteer, his commitment to community extends to his volunteer work with First Followers, Not on My Watch, and Ghetto Genius. And I will say we had 14 applicants to the library board. Celeste, did you want to add anything to this?
I'm grateful that we had so many applicants. We have such a strong board and Gloria and Mark are going to be great additions to the board. It's a great team and we're really looking forward to continuing to move ahead with our strategic plan and serving the community.
Thought I'd entertain a motion.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that.
I'll second.
Well, okay, and my motion is that we accept the two appointments Gloria, Gloria and Mark Pelmore to the library board as often.
Dennis and seconded by Sharice. Any discussion?
Well, Gloria's here. Can, can she say anything?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I am really honored to be able to serve the community in this capacity. When I, I graduated from the U of I and actually came back into the community a few years ago. And my first job back in town was in the children's department at the Urbana Free Library. And so it's really neat to kind of see this come back full circle and I'm really excited to be a part of the work. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Um, the next two items, ordinance 2020-11-060, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit for 111 West Kenyon Road, Plan Case 2404 SU20, the Vital Skin Dermatology. And then ordinance 2020-11061, an ordinance approving a major variance for the same project at the same location. And that was a ZBA case 2020 MAJ-06. So Marcus from CD, Marcus Ritchie from CD will be presenting this project.
Can you all hear me okay?
Uh, can you speak a little louder?
Yes, can you, uh, let me see if I can turn up the microphone a little bit. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, as you said, and I'll probably turn off my video just to be a little more stable. This is two cases before the council tonight, a special use permit request and a request for a major variance to allow parking in the required front yard for that special use. I will provide the background information and then go into specifics for the special use permit and ask the council to reach a decision and then proceed with the specifics of the front yard variance. Because if the special use permit isn't approved, then there is likely no reason for the front yard variance for that special use permit. David Line and Bob Kapelneck and Caleb Cable and other staff from Vital Skin Dermatology are here to answer questions when you like. I'll share my screen. The proposed dermatology clinic at the site would be treated as a hospital or clinic and require a special use permit in the B3 general business district. And we'll advance. At its September 24th meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the request as submitted and staff concur with this recommendation. The nine and a half acre parcel lies on the south side of West Kenyon Road between North Lincoln and Federal Drive. Nearby uses include Campus Inc., Peoria Motor Coach, Holiday and Express, and Garden Hotel Urbana, and One Illinois North Apartments. Table one in the packet summarizes the current zoning, existing land uses and future land use designations. Here we see a screenshot of the street view of the property provided by Google. Uh, you can see the subject property and Campus Inc. is off to the west. And One Illinois North is to the south and to the east is Holiday and Express. The zoning for this property and properties to the east is B3 general business and to the west is industrial, light industrial office. And to the south is R4 medium density multifamily residential. And the future land use here of this area is light industrial with regional business to the east and multifamily residential to the south. The proposed special use permit would allow the renovation of about 6,000 square feet of the existing building into a dermatology clinic. And the interior renovations would include 14 examination rooms. Staff believe that the proposed special use permit meets all three of the requirements for a special use permit. The proposed dermatology clinic is conducive to the public convenience at this location due to its proximity to Interstate 74. The proposed clinic would not be injurious or detrimental to the B3 zoning district or to the general public because it would not negatively affect nearby commercial hotel or retail uses and is buffered from the adjacent residential land by open space and trees. And it should not generate a substantial amount of traffic or require any additional infrastructure or services. Finally, the proposed clinic would conform to the regulations and standards of and preserve the essential character of the B3 zoning district. In summary, the conversion of a portion of the existing office building to a dermatology clinic would provide economic benefit to Urbana and meets the criteria required for a special use permit. The findings are summarized in the staff report. And city council has the options to approve, approve the ordinance with certain conditions and terms or deny the ordinance. And as stated before, on September 24th, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the special use permit with one condition and staff concurs with this recommendation. And that is the end of the staff report.
Are there any questions for Marcus?
Yeah.
Oh, Dennis, yes.
So Marcus, uh, why is this coming to us at the city council? Didn't the city council request that the things from the planning commission come to our, to us first in the committee of the whole? Have you forgotten that?
I can address that Marcus, as I was involved in those conversations. If I remember correctly, the conversations really revolved more around things that were new construction. So the proposal that was put forward suggested that if there was a major addition to an existing building, that that, that that should definitely come forward. But this is a reuse of an existing building where typically we want to encourage that reuse so that we don't have vacant buildings. So that's why it's coming directly to council.
Okay. So I'd like to hear from other council members about whether they have concerns about that. And I mean, I would also have to comment that we're having like a major variance coming from the ZBA. And that would be a concern because it's a residential area and there are neighbors that may be affected by that who may not even be aware of these kinds of cases coming before our attention. So having, having asked the question, I guess I was wondering whether any members of the council are concerned about this in particular in that it's just a reuse of a building or do we feel comfortable going forward? I don't, I'm not aware that there was necessarily any public comment against it or an emails of concern, but I still think it's worth asking the, the rest of the council members.
Uh, Bill, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Um, first on the process, I remember those conversations. I do, do think that, you know, there were, were some new developments and or redevelopments that that really were a big, a big change. I think we were frustrated that that hadn't come to committee of the whole. But I think as the conversation evolved, we realized that, and we'd talked about, you know, well, could we say anything that wasn't unanimous, say from the, from the planning commissioner's EBA, go to committee of the whole first. And we talked about things like that. But I think it also evolved a little bit so that we realized that even now we have that option to either send it to committee or to send it to the next council meeting. If we, if we want to skip the committee and just want to think about it, some we could do that. So we still have options at this point. It's just a matter of discussing it a little bit and figuring out, you know, if there's an, if there's something we don't know about it or think that the public should be more aware that, that there may be more public that would provide input if they were aware of it. So I think as far as the process goes, I'm comfortable with at least considering these now. And then if we decide that it needs more consideration or more public input, we, we still have options for that. As far as this particular one, the special use, I don't see any problem. I don't, I, I think it's a little strange that hospital uses or special uses in B3, but that's probably something that could be addressed in some future comprehensive plan. But I, yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with this one.
There will be a variance asked for though, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'll discuss that different separately.
Mary Alice and then Sharice?
Yeah, I want to speak a little bit to the special use permits as, as Bill had said that there's, it sounds to me like there's really no way for a hospital or clinics to be granted by right for a different. to be granted by right for different business zones. But we have had occasions in which special use permits have garnered a lot of neighborhood inquiry. I'm thinking specifically of the case where the fraternity, a church had, who had requested a special use permit to reuse that building. And I, so I do feel pretty strongly that special use cases should come before council, before the committee of the hall, before they come to council. Because we're going to have a lot of people in different neighborhoods who are going to be feeling like they're going to be put on the line that this is going to be a final vote when it comes to city council. So specifically with, with special use permits, I, I realize we're kind of in a weird situation here with, with the medical version one here, but in general, special use permits, it's my desire to have those come to the committee of the whole first.
Sharice?
Um, I think, I think what caught my eye, because I did go online and looked this place up. I didn't know they had already taken residence in the, in, in, in the building. And from what I saw online to their, the corporate offices of Vital Skin. And so you, you're having a corporation in mixed with a medical thing. I wanted to know how that works.
The zoning ordinance does allow multiple uses of a single parcel or a single building by right. And those individual uses are reviewed against the table of uses. So a professional office or a warehouse is permitted by right in the IN one light industrial office zoning district. So those uses are permitted and they've started renovating the building for those uses.
Bill, Colebrook?
Yeah, and Marcus, in your presentation, you had mentioned that there's going to be, I can't remember your term, but very little traffic is going to be coming to the business. Has the business owner given some sort of estimate of what that traffic volume will look like per hour, per day, et cetera?
So the special use permit only applies to the hospital clinic portion of the use. So that's six thousand square feet of the forty thousand square foot business. So the cri, answers to the criteria were directed only to the special use portion, which is the fourteen examination rooms when compared with the rest of the forty thousand square foot property. This, when compared to the National Council of Teachers of English Warehouse Property was deemed by staff to not likely be a larger traffic generator than the existing use. The proposed use did not trigger the requirements for a traffic study.
Thank you.
So is this business going to be an extension of what we already have regarding? Because my understanding from what I read is that it's a, a kind of a colla, dermatology practice collaboration. You know, I mean, I know they, they do surgeries for skin cancer and they want to do all of, all of that kind of stuffs, but what I under, I just want to understand what the is it, is it a matter of the dermatology department, for example, from Carl or somebody moving into this structure?
As I understand it, and I'll defer to the, to the applicant for more details. The, the clinic is there to provide services to patients, but also it's there to serve as a model clinic because the professional office portion of the building manages independent dermatology clinics and this clinic would serve as a model dermatology clinic to show interested clinics how one of their clinics runs. But I'll defer to the applicants for additional details if you like.
Mr. Kapal, Kapal neck or Mr. Capal wish to speak?
This is Bob Kapalneck. No problem. Nobody gets that one right. I think Dave lines on, online also, forgive the pun. Dave's with Vital Skin, the, the corporation itself. I'm their architect. So Marcus, is Dave on the Zoom meeting?
I don't see Dave's name.
Okay, then I can, let me speak a little bit in terms of what the, what the company is. Marcus is correct. We're, we're currently renovating a portion of the building to serve as the corporate offices for Vital Skin Dermatology. Vital Skin is going to be opening dermatology clinics. At first it was going to be regionally and we're talking about Midwest, but now it's looking like it might even become a national group. So currently we have one under construction in Mattoon, Decatur, Louisville, Chicago. And this has actually happened a lot quicker than was anticipated, but there is a, a need to have a clinic at the corporate facility because they want one in Urbana. And it just makes sense in terms of sharing the facility, sharing staff. The building itself would be too big just to serve for their corporate offices. So the six thousand foot, six thousand square foot carve out works perfectly to fit as a clinic within the building as a whole. Does that answer the question about the corporation and the structure of it?
Well, kind of. What I was trying to get a, an idea of is, because it said, um, dermatology and aesthetics, my understanding with aesthetics is that that's basically plastic surgery?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's cosmetic dermatology is botox, laser treatments, things like that. Some of their facilities will offer cosmetic dermatology in addition to general dermatology. Most of the clinics, including in Urbana, will have rooms that are labeled as procedure rooms, which are primarily there just to perform most surgery, which is the, the skin cancer surgery. But no, plastic surgery, you'd be looking at getting into more of a medical use as opposed to a business use, which you can classify a clinic like this as a business use. Once you get into surgery, that opens up another can of worms and they will not be doing that in this facility or any of theirs as far as I know at this point.
So the facility though will be used to remove certain carcinomas from the skin and so on and so forth?
Exact, exactly. It's a fairly routine procedure now that you, you go in, they remove the suspect tissue, they check it to make sure they got it all. If they don't, they keep going until they get it all. It's, it's fairly standard now. That, that is the standard skin. And I, as an architect, I hate to be talking about that. I wish Dave was online. But i- it's not intensive surgery.
And so you have locations in Jeffersonville as well?
No, for now, it's, as I said, Mattoon is about to open. Decatur is about to start construction. Louisville is about to start construction. And in Chicago, I believe there, there's a renovation that they're looking at right now. So this, this, this facility though, in terms of the corporate offices, it's going to employ a substantial amount of, of people in fairly good, high paying jobs. Personally, I think it's a boon to the community. And in terms of traffic generation, fourteen exam rooms doesn't really generate a lot of vehicular traffic.
Any other questions? Dennis?
Well, I would say that ultimately, I'm, I would be very supportive of this. It would certainly bring a nice new business to a, used to a building that's been vacated. If it, it's adjacent to the expressway, so it's not abutting a neighborhood. And I would say that the increased potential job opportunity here would be useful. And it's always good to have a regional or a national corporate office in your, in your town to, to continue to build the business community in our, in our city. So I appreciate you wanting to, finding this, this location being suitable to you. As far as like, you know, whether it should have come to us sooner or later through via the committee of the hall. All right, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to send it to, I'm not going to send it to committee. I, I haven't heard anybody who, who has had adverse feelings about it step forward. And, you know, maybe the topic about the variance for parking may have a slightly different direction, but generally I think that this is not going to hurt us, it's going to help us. So if, unless there's somebody else on council feels pretty strong about it, I'm willing to make a, a motion. So I guess I will.
Go ahead.
All right, so I guess I move ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six zero and ordinance approving a special use permit at one, 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 one West Kenyon Road, which is a planning case two twenty four oh four SU dash twenty concerning vital skin dermatology for approval here and now.
Looked by Dennis, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Further discussion. Jared?
The only comment, it's just for staff that, you know, I don't know if we have a running general idea list thing, Lori, about stuff that's coming from, from plan commission or from ZBA that goes to council, but maybe we should just review it for special, special use permits being added to that list.
Right, because several of us have questioned that and expressed concern. So I think it's, it won't hurt to go through that pathway.
But otherwise I, I'll support this.
I just, I would, yeah, I just wanted to be more knowledgeable about, I'm like looking at the, you know, trying to find something online and, and I could not find anything definitive about what vital skin. It's like, you know, what, what are they? And the only thing I could get was that it was some kind of conglomerate of, of dermatology doctors that is like a physician's group kind of thing, but I, I guess that's not what it is. I'm not quite sure. I'm sure there's some, there'll be some physicians there, but it's not like a physician's group, I suppose.
One, one, well, I, I will, I'll ask them to answer. I, I would just remind folks that one thing that you can always do is go back and watch the plan commission meeting. And many of the questions that you as council members have are, are always answered at those meetings and they're really, really actually useful to watch. So that's another way to get really a good explanation. But would Mr. Kapal, Kapal neck wish to answer that question? I'm determined to pronounce your name wrong.
No, you're fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, no, it, these physicians will be basically employed by Vital Skin. They're not borrowing docs from other practices. These are going to be independent physicians that are, that are combining their practices and, and going to work for Vital Skin basically.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? It looks like we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up, we have ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six one, which is an ordinance approving a major variance at the same location. Is that Marcus or?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I will again turn off my video and share my screen. Vital Skin Physician Management requests a major variance to reduce the minimum front yard from fifteen feet to one foot to allow additional parking in front of the building for the dermatology clinic that was just approved in the special use permit. Yeah, it's October twentieth meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted to forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve because the special circumstances of the parcel are not great enough to require the variance and because there are alternatives to the proposed parking configuration that would eliminate the need for the variance, staff recommended to the board deny the request and recommends that city council deny the request. You've already gotten the background information. Here are some photographs of the property showing the very large front lawn that is actually part of I dot's right of way there north of the property. You can see the mature trees, the shrubs along the west side of the front of the building. This shows you driving in to the north parking lot from the east. This is the existing parking lot on the northeast side of the property. And there you can see the property line where the proposed parking lot would be just south of the property line. The trees themselves are actually north of the property line on I dot's right of way. The previous owner and now Vital Skin will maintain and continue to maintain the I dot right of way. Couple more snapshots. This is looking at the access drive in the north parking lot from the west property line, looking back towards the way we just came. And this is a picture of the property, an aerial photograph. You can see here, this is, I guess, a former clover leaf of the I seventy four interchange, which is why this land is here, according to one of our ZBA members. You can see that the right of way between the center line of West Kenyon Road and the north property line is much wider at this property than it is to the west. And over here to the east, the, this property actually includes what used to be I dot right of way. So this is how the property looks from the air and the large wide right of way there. The applicant proposes to construct an additional fourteen parking spaces in front of the building. This is that proposed site plan. These parking spaces are existing against the north side of the building. They propose to add two accessible parking spaces in that row of parking and add twelve additional parking spaces along the north side of the property. The dashed line shows the property line. They would avoid the mature trees. There is approximately sixty one feet of buildable space between the north side of the building and the north property line. The proposed configuration includes a twenty one and a half foot wide aisle here. An eighteen and a half foot deep row of parking here, which leaves one foot of space between the edge of the parking area and the northern property line. The parking would avoid the mature trees along the north property line. The applicant states that the available space between the access drive and the north property line does not allow them to construct additional parking without a variance, nor is there room to install the additional parking with a landscape buffer that would allow them to encroach up to ten feet into the required fifteen foot front yard variance. Although the proposed parking configuration may be the most straightforward, staff does not find that it represents the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance, which is one of the six criteria to be considered for a major variance. There are alternative parking configurations. There are alternative parking configurations where the option to install a landscape buffer. Which would allow parking up to ten feet into the required yard would eliminate the need for a variance. Or at the very least would reduce the encroachment into the required front yard. One of these is if they would narrow the access drive from two way to. Single direction and angle the parking. This would leave five and a half feet between the parking row that was just added and the property line. Which would allow enough parking to install the landscape buffer. That would allow them to encroach nine and a half feet into the required yard. In other words, no variance would be required if this configuration were selected. The other configuration was to use parallel parking or zero degree parking as the additional row of parking. Because a row of parallel parking spaces is only eight and a half feet wide. This would allow. Adequate space to install the landscape buffer north of the new row of parking. And that landscape buffer would be the thing that would allow them to encroach into the required yard without a variance. It's also worth noting that the site currently has a hundred and five parking spaces, which is fifteen percent more spaces than are required by the zoning ordinance. Staff believe that the request meets four of the six criteria for a zoning variance. The applicant states that the special circumstances in this case. Are that there is not enough space in front of the building to accommodate both additional parking and the necessary landscape buffer. Staff has suggested to alternative parking options that would satisfy. The desire to add parking and would not require a variance. So this is not a sufficiently special circumstance. And should weigh against the request. Secondly, the variance request is not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The front entrance of the building was designed to access the former office space while the back entrance was used to access the warehouse space. Staff concur that the north entrance and its parking area are the most logical for the dermatology clinic. This factor should weigh in favor of the request. The own, as far as altering the essential character of the neighborhood. The only main entrance visible from the road is vital skins building, which is set back over a hundred feet from the street. Adding a row of parking to the parking lot should not significantly alter the view of the building. And should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor should weigh in favor of the request. Adding parking in the proposed location should not increase traffic or noise and should not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. This factor should weigh in favor of the request. Staff has determined that other parking configurations could provide additional parking. And that there is sufficient space for both parking and the landscape buffer. Eliminating the need for the requested variance showing that the proposed configuration is not the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance. This factor should weigh against the request. And finally, the practical difficulty in carrying out the zoning ordinance is the exceptional width of the right of way at this location. And the location of the existing building. While staff has shown that other parking configurations may be possible without requiring a variance. The variance request is the result of the aforementioned practical difficulties. And this factor should weigh in favor of the request. The findings are summarized in the staff report and highlights are that the special circumstances of the site. Is that space available between the exceptionally wide right of way and the front of the building? Does not leave sufficient room for the desired parking configuration. That the proposed variance should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood nor cause a nuisance to adjacent properties. And that the proposed variance is not the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals was to recommend approval of the major variance request with one condition. And that is the end of the staff report.
Are there questions for Marcus on this one? Dennis.
So Marcus, because the. Because the gra, the angle parking wasn't actually kind of located on the site plan map. It was sort of hard to understand quite where this would be affected. So. As I understand it, the, the circle drive. Is not directional at this point. And there's perpendicular parking in front of the building. But, but staff is suggesting that if the driveway was directed to be one way. And there was angle parking, then the requirements for. Without encroaching into the right of way, but allowing for. The, the buffer, the vegetable, the. The planted bo, buffer, I can't remember what the name of it is, but. Which would then what mask the parking from the road? Is that the reason why we would be doing that?
Yes.
It would be like a line of a small hedge or some such.
Line of trees and shrubs that would probably, you know, coincide with the existing mature trees.
And it would allow, would that then allow the number of parking spaces that are needed in the mind of the developer. To be sufficient to serve as the request that they were hoping for.
We have not engineered the configuration to see if there would be enough spaces. That would be up to the applicant. We're simply showing that you can fit. Two rows of ankle parking and a single one way access drive. Into that sixty one feet with enough room left over for a landscape buffer. And it's the landscape buffer itself that allows. And, and encroachment up to ten feet into the required yard without having to get a variance.
Well, there's so, so many places do have angle parking that worked extremely well. I mean, you go to. Myers, you go to Walmart, you go to any, any practically every fast food restaurant that has a drive up. And you're going to have that experience and people understand how to move in and out of it. And it's probably safer to have angle parking than perpendicular parking. So, you know, I'm, so I would kind of. You know, it's, that was kind of an interesting case because there were like a lot of. Issues that seem to favor the request for a special permit use. And then staff is saying, well, look at, you don't have to do that. You can do it following, you know. Without even requesting a special use permit. By adequately changing your plans like, you know, to accommodate, you know, the setback and the city requirements. So I guess, I guess I'm kind of in favor of asking them to reconsider and just follow the plan of. Of diagonal parking and make the, make the, the. The driveway entrance a one way drive and all you need to do is, is place a sign that say enter. Another part saying, please do not enter at this end. And I, I think people could figure it out.
And, and just to be clear, this is a variance, not a special use permit.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, any other comments? Bill.
So. Seems like the main reason you, you're recommending. That we not approve this is because there's another option and one of those options is the angle parking. It does seem like if you made it one way. It would be a little confusing for the employees if the employees are the ones parking in back. Because you, you're going to really want to use that westernmost drive because that's the obvious. Want to use to get to the back parking lot. But you'd either have to come in the easternmost drive and drive clear across or else. Go out that way. I guess, you know, it would, you could get used to it. But I, I guess what concerns me is that if it's just a matter of a technicality, that that's. I could understand that coming into play more. In different situations. I mean, this front yard is so huge because of the I dot property. And I, I, I remember there was a cloverleaf at Neal Street. This one never had a cloverleaf that. I remember Lily said that. When we were looking at the adjacent right away earlier this year. Lily brought up this nineteen seventy three comp plan and Goodwin had originally been planned to go over the interstate and then. Kind of wrap around to Lincoln Avenue north of the interstate. So it was going to be kind of a funky interchange where they. Had both Goodwin and Lincoln Avenue going across the interstate. And then when you got off, you could either choose to go down Goodwin or keep going and then go down Lincoln. Would have been interesting. Who would have, but definitely added a different aspect to that part of town, but. So I don't, I don't see why I dot needs that property. It's, it would make it more. It'd be, seems like they could buy a chunk of the property from I dot. And I think somebody in the plan commission mentioned that. So I don't know, I'm a little hesitant to deny it because it seems like it's pretty. It's not really going to hurt anything there. You could still use the right away to plant. Buffer. You probably need to get I dots permission, but I think there already are some trees there, aren't there?
Yes.
So, yeah, I don't have a real strong opinion either way, I guess.
Okay, are there any questions for Marcus? And if not, we'll get these on the, a motion on the floor. Charisse, a question? Unmute, please.
I guess my question is, did they state like, is, is it like for patient transport or something like that that would make it easier? For them to add those parking spaces? I'm trying to.
They stated that the proposed new parking spaces as well as those that are already there would be reserved. For patients for the clinic, that that north entrance would be specifically for the new clinic. And then that parking lot would be reserved for patients. And employees and other staff would park in the southern parking lot.
Okay.
Laurie, did you want to add something?
Just before you, you take a motion, I was wondering if you wanted to allow the applicants to address this particular issue?
Sure.
With this case?
Please, can you hear me again?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just to address some of the points. Marcus is correct. We, we could do angle parking there. Our hesitation on that is a, a lot of the patients in this type of a clinic are going to be elderly mobility challenge type. Individuals and we're very hesitant to shrink that access aisle. Less than the twenty one and a half feet that would be required for the, for the two way traffic. We're also worried about. Creating a one way traffic flow through there that could, could disorient some of the, the elderly drivers also. So. That's why we're, we're pushing away from the angled parking. The, the major point and Mr. Brown hit on it. We've got a hundred and ten feet between the center line of Kenyon and our property line. And whether we put in a row of angle parking or a row of. Perpendicular parking as we've designed, it's going to look the same from a hundred and ten feet away. The, the properties adjacent to us have. Parking and drives closer to Kenyon than we'd have even putting in the ninety degree parking that we're requesting. So there's no, really the motive for the ninety degree parking that we want is we believe it's safer. For the types of patients we're going to have coming in and out. We also want to be careful about not creating a one way drive through there. And I'm happy to answer any other questions about this.
So questions for Mr. Kappel Nick, Dennis and then Charisse, and then we, we'll need to get a motion on the floor.
Had Bob, have you, had you considered. Placing additional parking off of the, the east end of your drive there. I see that there is another road that goes south along the property line to service. A door probably into your, what would become the store room or whatever other.
Yeah, we, we could not get it to work and, and even still. In any healthcare situation, we're trying to get those parking spaces as close to the main entrance door of the clinic as we possibly clean. As we possibly can. And we did look at the, at the east side. It just doesn't work practically.
Because if, if the drive, if the parking was up against the building. There could be a walkway that allows people to come in or there could even be a side door. Additionally to the front entrance, or do you only want to have one front entrance?
Yeah, we, we could, you, you have to be able to control the, the access to a clinic. So it really needs to be just one main entrance door. And, and like I said, we, we looked at the east, it just doesn't work.
Okay.
Okay, Charisse, you had a question?
I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm. And I'm not a architect or a planner of any kind, but I am trying to understand. My perpendicular parking is less safe than, than pulling up the diagonal type of parking. It. Mind, I don't know, my experience with senior drivers is that. A lot of them usually don't take themselves to the hospital to have a, a procedure done or a clinic.
No, you're correct. Most of these people will have somebody accompanying them, but not all of them will. And the, the, what you have to look at is the width of that access drive. And if we go to angled parking, we're reducing the width of that access drive down to fourteen and a half feet. Versus twenty one and a half feet. So if there ever is a car that's coming through there, you obviously have more room. More of a factor of safety with twenty one and a half feet than we have with the fourteen and a half feet.
So. You want to extend the. That, that parking area or after you drive into the, into the. I don't know entrance, you, you want to have entrance and exit on both sides of the. Of the road that leads to that front parking area.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, one more question and then we'll try to get a motion.
And the, the architectural plan Bob sent you, the architect. You were intending to build a canopy at the entrance. Is that correct? Is that a drive through canopy?
No, no, it, it's a pedestrian canopy. That, that's actually been permitted and construction started this week on that.
Okay, so it's not a drive through?
No, there's not enough room to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion that anyone wants to make? Bill.
Yeah. I'll move to approve. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six one and ordinance approving a major variance.
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Further discussion. Mary Alice, then Bill and then Bill.
Um, so I guess in markets, maybe this is a question for you. I think that the, the main concern of staff is that it's not the minimum deviation. The requirements, the zoning ordinance. I find this property is, is, it's kind of has a unique situation here. I mean, if. If a, an applicant came to us asking for this exact same thing and they didn't have that buffer. That's owned by I dot, I would not support it at all. But because we have this I dot in front of it, I'm, I'm leaning more towards supporting this. So I feel like it's kind of a, a special situation here. Not everybody has that, that type of, of. Buffer that is kind of mandated because somebody else owns the piece of land. Is there, is there anything else that I'm missing here aside from that one point? Number five?
As we started the Z B A process and before it came to city council, we were able to consult with. Kurt Borman in the legal division and he did clarify for us that there is no minimum number of. Criteria that a request needs to fulfill for it to be approved. And there is no specific criteria that it needs to meet. To be approved, although there, we have an opinion that this minimum deviation one is one of the more important ones, but. When you see a four to two in favor versus opposed, you know, that's. But when you see a four to two in favor versus opposed, you know, that's not, that's not bad odds.
Okay. All right.
Bill Culbrook?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. The, the opinions of the architect here late in the discussion have really impacted my decision. I'm in favor of approving this for the reasons that he stated. I like the idea of the additional seven feet or so, you know, from 14 and a half feet to 21 and a half feet. I, I think that extra room will speak to the safety of, of the pedestrians and the motors that come through there. I like a better idea of the two-way traffic as opposed to forcing a one-way traffic. We're saving the trees that are existing and the, 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 the properties on both sides are actually closer to Kenyon Road than what this, 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 you know, this addition, you know, parking lot addition would, would be. And aesthetically, whether you're looking from I-74 or from Kenyon Road, it's, it's, you know, you're not going to be able to tell the difference. So because of, I believe those impactful statements, I'm going to vote to approve this.
Any, any further comments? Okay, Bill, Bill Brown?
Yeah, I, I think I, I was just persuaded by the safety issues too. I think having the extra space when you're backing out really helps. And I guess, I don't know, I still wonder how that would work with the employee parking. If they would have to go through those cars, that would just increase the traffic going between the angled cars. So I think overall the safety would be better with the way that they have it planned.
Okay. Any further comments? Sharice?
I, I just want to say that as far as like the, the whole other buildings around the area that, you know, that are closer to Kenyon Road, that you're basically closer because of the way Kenyon Road runs. It's not, it's not one of those things that is like, you know, you're getting closer to the road than mine. No, it's the way Kenyon Road curves and that's why that property goes that way. The other thing I, I I just wanted to say is I really don't see that, that the, the, the safety factor, I guess I'm not, I'm just not seeing that. If there's another way that it can be done relatively safe, safely. From what he discussed to be for, it wasn't, you know, it didn't sound like there was going to be a lot of patient traffic there because it's mostly being used as the corporate offices. At least that's my understanding. So I don't know.
Okay. I think given, first of all, we've got a number of items left on the agenda. I, I'm going to ask if we can take a vote on this now. Are you ready to vote? Okay. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, I think I can support this. I think there's been a reasonable case and I'd say yes.
Okay. Mr. Culbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes five yeses and with one nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Atlanta.
Thanks.
We will try to get some employment. I'd like to know the updated employment figures there. And Jared, would you like to move to extend the meeting till 11:00 PM?
I'm motioning to extend the meeting to 11:00.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So are we going to be able to get through all of this by 11:00?
We're going to try.
Okay.
You.
See you on Tuesday.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Culbrook?
Begrudgingly, yes. I get up at 4:00 AM.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay.
That motion passes. Cap, are you presenting this?
I am. All right. So Jane and Steve Amundson request a major variance to allow an air conditioning unit to encroach three feet into the required five-foot side yard at 106 East Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicants are here to answer any questions you may have as well. And we've received three communications prior to tonight's meeting and the ZBA meeting. All were in favor of the major variance. The zoning board of appeals unanimously recommended to approve the major variance and staff concur. Here's a location map of the property. The applicants seek a variance to allow an air conditioning unit to encroach into the required side yard. 106 East Pennsylvania is located on the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue between Broadway Avenue and South Fine Street. The parcel is roughly 0.30 acres and the lot is 68 feet wide and 193 feet deep. The house was built in 1956, less than five feet from the east property line, and it was built without central air conditioning. Here's a zoning map of the property. The site is owned R2, single-family residential. The surrounding properties are also zoned R2 with the exception of Blair Park to the south, which is owned CRE, conservation, recreation, education. Nearby are the Urbana Middle School, Urbana High School and Blair Park. And air conditioning units are allowed by right in the R2 zoning district, but they cannot be located in a required yard. Here's a photo of the home.
Kate, is it going to be on the east side or west side of the house?
It will be on the east side.
Thank you.
A major variance is necessary because of the configuration of the lot. The home already encroaches into the required side yard and there's less than five feet of clearance on the east side of the home. The applicants currently have window air conditioning units, but would like to install a whole house system. The proposed air conditioning unit will be 29 inches by 29 inches and will be located on the east side of the house across from the neighbor's air conditioning unit. The proposed air conditioner will be a newer model that supposedly will generate less noise than older models. And approving the variance would allow the applicants to install an air conditioner two feet from the property line. This is a photo of the west side of the house. This is the east side, the, and the general location for the proposed unit. The east side is the most practical and cost-effective for the air conditioner because the driveway and garage are located on the west side of the home and it would make it difficult to put the air conditioning unit there. There's also a set in, or the, there's a deck in the rear yard attached to the house, which makes it impractical to locate the air conditioning unit in the rear yard. And there is a set in area next to the back porch where the air conditioner could fit. However, it's under a downspout, which would create difficulties with mechanical equipment. This is the site plan for the air conditioning unit. And to summarize, staff found that the case meets all requirements for a major variance. The configuration of the lot and narrow side yard create a practical difficulty. Regardless of where the unit is placed in the east side yard, it would be less than five feet from the property line. The unit would also be placed as close to the house as possible. And units are, air conditioning units are allowed in residential zoning districts and it's common to see them next to houses. Additionally, all three neighbors on the east, west and north sides of the house have submitted letters of support for the major variance and they were included in your packet. This proposed location is the most reasonable and cost-effective and that's why staff is supporting it as well as the fact that it meets all major variance criteria. The Urbana City Council has the following options for the planned case. Approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions or deny the ordinance. And at the October 21st, 2020 meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted with six As and zero As to forward the case to the Urbana City Council with a recommendation to approve the request with the following condition. That the air conditioning unit generally conforms to the site plan as shown in ordinance attachment A. Staff concur.
Are there any technical questions for Cap? Is there a motion?
I had a question.
Oh, yes, Dennis.
Did it, there was, was there a discussion of whether the, the air conditioner should be screened by a fence or something?
There was a discussion about that among staff. What, basically what will be required of the air conditioning unit and of any air conditioning unit is that it will meet the noise ordinance requirements for the city. If that were not the case and a screened fence or landscaping would help that, then we would require it to be installed. But as of right now, we don't have a reason to believe that that will be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get a motion? Bill?
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2020-11-062.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion. And we have the homeowner Jane Admanson's on, is on the screen.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. It will save us a ton of money because one thing that Cat didn't say is if we put it in the one place we could on the west side next to the driveway, we would have to run all the piping through our newly finished basement ceiling and ruin all the ceiling drywall going all the way across the basement because the electrical system is on the other end of the basement. Besides being under the downspout. So that's another reason. And I just talked to a neighbor today and they, the one that, that will see the air conditioner and it's actually going to be across from their air conditioner and they are perfectly fine with it.
Are we ready to vote? Mary Alice?
I just, I just wanted to say, I know that Cat had already said that the neighbors had already submitted letters in support of this. But I think the, the one that stands out the most is the neighbor in which they'll be sharing the, that's right on the east side of the property line and Joanne Geigner, I believe is her name, who, who specifically says that, I mean, they would be the property owners that would be most affected by, by the variance. So for that reason, I'm willing to support this.
Hey. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say, I'm 70 and this will be the first time I would ever live in a house with air conditioning, central air conditioning.
Well, we will deny you that pleasure perhaps.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Culbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes and enjoy that air conditioning. Next up is resolution number 2020-11-056R, which is a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Urbana Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan Fiscal 2020 to 2021. And I wanted to clarify that this is about the consolidated plan and it's not about the comprehensive plan. Was a misunderstanding there. Sheila?
Hi, good evening. If you remember back in the spring, the city received an allocation from HUD for $294,000 and the funds were supposed to be used to prevent or prepare or respond to COVID-19. That was with CARES Act I. We received notice through CARES Act III that we received an additional $334,000. This amendment will allow us to accept the money and put in our plan. Staff is still working with community leaders to identify programs and identify unmet needs in the community. And then once those are identified, we'll come back to council with policy or program manuals similar to what we did with the small business and rent assistance. So this really just allows us, it's a procedural matter that allows us to accept the grant from HUD.
Is there a motion to get this on the floor?
I'll make that motion. I'll move resolution number 2020-11-056R, a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Urbana Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan for FY 2021 to be approved.
A second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
There was some public input on this specific one. And just so that the public is aware that all the, the, all of these plans go through a community input. It goes through, what is Sheila, what's the name of the, the board that this goes through, the commission?
The Community Development Commission?
Yeah, the Community Development Commission. So the, the plan, the community development plan is done, is it every three years or every five years?
Five years. And then because we receive such a large increase in funds, that's why we have to amend it.
Okay. So it, it comes through every five years. It is something that that board discusses and talks with community partners. It's my understanding that it's not the mayor who actually determines where those funds are spent. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, we, we reach out to city leaders and social service agencies to find out where there's gaps in service or unmet needs and then try to use the funds there.
Okay, thank you.
But council makes that indetermination on what the funds are used for.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Culbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution 2020-11-057R, which is a resolution accepting the local Cures Economic Support Payment Grant Program from the state of Illinois.
Stephanie is logging on now. Apologies for the delay. So I will just say, this is a grant that we have applied for. We have not yet received it. We are anticipating that notification at any moment. We're bringing it forward now so that we can act on it as soon as it is, is awarded. Stephanie, if you want to unmute, I just gave the overview. I said we've applied. We haven't gotten it. We're trying to act fast.
That's right. We're going to have a quick turnaround on this if we're awarded and we hope to receive the word any day now. This, we've applied for $500,000 through the Cures Economic Support Grant from the state. And we've worked to set up an application process where businesses could apply for grants through this up to a $20,000 maximum grant. And this would be to reimburse businesses for improvements they've made to their property to make it safer for employees and customers due to COVID. So we have a list of expenses, everything from tents to HVAC to heaters, to wands for cleaning and anything like that, that they've used to enhance their business to make it safer. We're in a little bit of a situation with restaurants closed right now, but hopefully we'll get past that and they'll be able to get open. It will be a quick turnaround. These are for expenses incurred from March 1st through December 31st. Businesses would have to supply receipts to show what they purchased, which we would review and score quickly. And this is a reimbursement program. So the city would reimburse the businesses and then we would receive reimbursement from the state of Illinois. And because of the quick turnaround, we would hope, we would plan to be requesting that reimbursement from the state by January 30th, 2021. So I'm glad to answer any questions you have. I think I've covered the basics of what we're looking to do to help out.
Jared?
Stephanie, we did get an email from the GM of the Common Ground Food Co-op asking about the 5 million revenue threshold and whether or not that was a state requirement or if that's a City of Urbana requirement, because it would exclude them from applying for it.
Sure. And that was, that is a requirement that we can change. I worked with a couple of other communities, Champagne Rand Tool and the SBDC. And so we have similar programs waiting on this grant. And that threshold was just put in place to try to keep it to locally on businesses so we could support those, but that amount can be changed if the council so, would like to.
And it could just be something. And it could just be something as simple as changing it to net revenue. Because it doesn't state, but it's implied gross, not nets. And if it was nets, then that, you know, if you're netting 5 mil, you're doing really well. So.
Absolutely. If the council wants to do that, we can.
Bill?
Is this, will, will this be like first come, first served, whoever gets their applications in first or will it be competitive where, I mean, 200,000 might run out. That's how I'm thinking.
Right, 500,000, $20,000 maximum grant. So we could do 25, $20,000 grants, though I wouldn't expect all of them to be for the full $20,000. So we are looking kind of doing a minimum of a $500 grant. Champagne on their grant that's similar, they're doing a $5,000 maximum. We kept in mind that some businesses may have done some major overhaul for HVAC systems to be safer or additions to buildings. So we just wanted that flexibility on the maximum amount.
So.
Oh, and back to your question, first come, first served. We are giving priority to those businesses hit hardest, which is the hospitality industry, restaurants and hotels. Then second priority is retail, third professional businesses, and then we're giving points for those that went without any income at all for 30 to 60 days or more than 60 days.
And I think also Steph in there was looking at other grants that a business has received so that perhaps we are being more equitable in distribution.
Right, but grants that already received the big business interruption grant are not eligible for this and that's a state requirement, not something we wrote in.
And, and you should have all received the list of businesses that have received grants to date from Stephanie today. Other questions for Stephanie? Mary Alice? Please mute.
Yep, sorry. Since this is a reimbursement program, that means that businesses would have to sketch out exactly what they want to do. So for example, if they want to buy heaters for outdoor eating, they would have to go ahead and buy them and then get reimbursed. But there's no guarantee that they will qualify for those funds, right, before they send them? Or is there a way that they can work with economic development to make sure that their expenses that they're planning on would be something that would be reimbursable?
Yes, we would work with them. If they haven't already spent money between March and now, those that still have, are working on a winter plan, could go ahead and apply, let us know what they're wanting to do and make the purchase and turn in receipts by December 31st.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Make the purchase by December 31st.
Any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I will move resolution number 2020-11-057, a resolution accepting the local Cures Economic Support Payments Grant Program, ES Program Funding from the state of Illinois for approval.
Seconded by Dennis. Stephanie?
Do you want that as written or with Dennis or with Jared's suggestion of the net revenue?
I think Jared's suggestion is a great one, so let's include that one.
I'll second that. Yeah, correction.
Okay. We have the motion with the one change that it's net revenue of $5 million. Okay, further discussion? Will the clerk please? Sharice and then Bill.
Stephanie, what, what is the, so there's a cap on it now that if a, if a business nets more than $5 million that they're not qualified?
Correct.
For the funds?
Okay.
So, um, so is this mostly going towards small businesses in Urbana?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like franchise businesses is what I guess I'm thinking, like Kentucky.
Right, and that's why that number was kind of put there because a lot, our small businesses don't have a larger corporation that's, that's helping them. And just especially even today, I've had several calls from businesses with the new mitigation in place that are just calling saying we need help.
Okay.
Bill, you had comment?
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't have a good feeling for that as far as, that seems like it would be high for net revenue. That's like profit, right? After all your expenses and pay your, all your employees and you make $5 million in profit last year. It doesn't really sound like small business to me, but is there, is there net versus, versus gross, is, is one easier to administer than the other or to verify?
We weren't making any requirements for financials because of the quick turnaround, but we can check, there are certain things we can check on or we can require. As far as that, we could require a balance sheet or tax return, things like that to make it part of, add that to the application for verification.
I don't know. Would that be mitigated by the other materials that were submitted in the application that you would understand which, which businesses were most pressing in need? Regardless of whether we're talking about net or gross.
You mean in prioritizing who would get the funds?
Right.
I mean, some of the businesses, we, we probably have a, an idea of how they would, they will have to self attest on the application, kind of where they stand. And they'll have to provide what they purchased and the receipts for that to get reimbursed.
Jared?
Just as, you know, thinking about it from perspective of small business management in what you're thinking about, even if you were the kind of company that could net that kind of money, like $20,000 is a drop in the bucket of most operational budgets. I mean, you know, you could, if I, if I were even just thinking of Common Ground because they were the ones who sent something about it and thinking about what it might cost to have put a Plexiglas around the checkout registers there, that could easily cover the entire, the entire thing. So I mean, there's, I don't know. Yeah, I guess there are some larger companies who like, you know, if you were netting 5 million, could apply for it. But I don't imagine a lot of people who are in that kind of situation are going to. I think the people who are going to apply for a $20,000 grant really need that money. If you, yeah, I mean, we changed it, you know, into a number of things, but people who are in that ballpark aren't going to be considered or interested in this. It's still going to be very much targeted to smaller businesses who really need it, in my opinion.
I guess I'd be more comfortable with net 2 million. Would you go for that?
Yeah, I don't see why that would be a problem.
I would, as, as the person who made the motion, I'm happy to change it to 2 million. I was just going to ask you, what, what would you consider to be a, a smaller sized business?
If you're netting two, two or less, you, you're doing really well and you probably won't apply for this grant. But I think that, you know, some people are on that, on that threshold, so.
Would you like to revise your motion then?
Well, yeah, 2 million, I'd be totally, I think 2 million is totally fine.
Mary Alice?
I'll revise my motion to net 2 million.
Okay.
Dennis, were you the one who seconded?
Yeah, I did and I, I'm accepting that.
Okay, so it's now net 2 million. Quick comment, Sharice?
Well, question for Stephanie. I just, because we've done these kind of grants before, right? I guess my question is, on, on an average, just kind of ballpark from previous applications, what would you say that, that the, the small business owner ends up netting?
From the grant?
Well, from previous grants that have been awarded.
Their financials?
Yeah, people that have, have applied for them. For, is there an average? Say?
Not that I'm aware of. Sheila might have had more information with the CDBG grants she did, but, and you know, her grants ended up ranging from like 12, 1300 up to 10,000, I think.
Yeah, 10,000 was the max and it was based on number of employees. Set it at a max of 15 employees. So I think there are businesses that would not qualify for that. But it was, it was a way to get at a small business without getting into financials.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? The motion is, has been revised to, to capping this to businesses with a net of $2 million in 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. And again, this is an example of the amount of work that goes into administering these grants. So thank you very much, Stephanie and, and everyone who helped formulate this one. I would ask that we deal with the two ordinances first before the UBA topic. Could we get a motion to move those two items on the agenda?
Or we could, we could make a motion to, to bring up the discussion for the UBA at our next meeting. I mean, we're going to run out of time right now.
Yeah, we have a very full agenda next week is what I'm concerned about.
Our next committee meeting, two weeks from now.
There is a, I, I could let Tina Stover speak, but I believe the UBA really would appreciate having movement on this agreement so that they can get reimbursed for all of their expenses from July 1 through now. There is an extreme need, I believe.
Yes, there is. So there, so this is a discussion item tonight and the intent was to put it on next week's agenda for, or, or two weeks from now, Lori.
Or to see if there is an appetite for a quick special council meeting prior to committee next week so that they could get approval and submit receipts right away and get a check.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to move items eight and nine ahead of item number seven for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Colebrook, seconded by Jared. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. So these two ordinances are basically extensions of emergency orders that have already been in place. The first 2020-11-063 is extending the suspension of the special event permits. And the next one is the extending of the emergency order related to masking, social distancing, and private parties in gatherings. And the only thing I'll say is that you probably are well aware of the rather alarming increase in spread of COVID in the state. Region six is now in mitigation. Our positivity rate is at 10.5%, according to the Public Health District today. Champagne County, 7.5%. The governor sent out a message yesterday that the new daily cases are up nearly 380% since October 1st. And the statewide test positivity is up over 180% in the past five weeks. Hospitalizations are up as well. And regions 1, 5, 7, and 8 have moved to tier two mitigation, which is even more restrictions than what we have in tier one. So we are entering a very serious, difficult period right now. And I would like, and I have issued the extensions and I would ask for these to be ratified. Mary Alice?
So the reason we're doing these extensions is because there was an expiration date on the, on the previous emergency orders.
Yeah.
I don't see any expiration date on either of these two. Is it only extended, how long have they extended for?
As the length, we decided to change it to, basically Champagne is doing, has similar ordinances and there, there's no expiration date on theirs. Either, basically, we're extending it till you decide to end it or do we move out of, let's see how it was worded. You'll have the authority to repeal the ordinance or I think.
That's it.
That's it, yeah.
Which is different than what we did before.
Correct. It just makes it easier to have to, instead of having to keep coming back to extend these and keep track of all these orders and when they expire, or making it an indefinite extension at this point.
So I, is there a way, we only have, we only have two special orders right now, is that right? Total enforcement? We have the special events and then we have the number of gatherings and the masks. Those are our main.
We've got several others as well.
I'm just trying to think. I can't think of off the top of my head what they are. I think, I think it would be useful for us to just bundle them all together and have a, a date in which they expire so they don't fall off the radar for everybody. That's just my opinion. So I'd like to hear what other people have to say. I realize we have three minutes left. So I guess I'll make a motion to extend the meeting until 11:15 and hope we don't need that much time.
I'll second that.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
What if I don't really want to call the roll for that?
The word please was used, I think.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Would you like to suggest a date, Mary Alice?
I, I was thinking the second week of January, get through the holidays. No, you're saying no. I, I'm opening the conversation in terms of, I think it could be longer than six weeks, but I don't want it to be six months. So somewhere in between there.
Bill, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I just think it'll depend on, on what's happening at the state level, the mitigation and, and the governor's orders. I think special events, I think the group limit now is 25, I think, under the current mitigation. If it goes back up to 50, you know, I'd be willing to reconsider that. But maybe I'd just leave it to, up to the council to bring it back. Or and, and maybe make a note that we should bring it back if things change.
We'll be, and we'll be reevaluating, you know, we'll be evaluating this as we go along. It just, it's just so hard to predict at this point. But, but what people are predicting, it's going to get worse before it gets better. And certainly our numbers locally and statewide are heading in the wrong direction. Which is why, which is why we just couldn't figure, you know, pick an, an end date here. So.
I think we could, on that special events, I think you could meet, meet them halfway. Basically, if, not right now, but if things did go back to say 50 for, for maximum size and say special events are allowed if there's no food or beverage involved and you follow all the, you know, the recommendations of the state as far as masking and social distancing outside things. Because I do think that, you know, you, you could have, you could have safe charity runs and stuff like that at some point. So I, I think I'll keep my eye on that one anyway.
Sharice?
I, I just want to say that if I, on some level, Mary Alice, I agree with you as far as having a, a, an expiration date. But the, the thing is, is that we thought we'd be able to, you know, by Christmas, we, we'd be able to all gather and be together and do family functions and so on and so forth. And we have so many people in this political environment that are just refusing to. And we have so many people in this political environment that are just refusing to you know, go along so that we can get to that, that that's why our, our numbers keep going up, and um.
And, and I, and I will point out, you know, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, the holidays, the students go home, the students are scheduled to come back, I believe, the fourth week in January, so there, there's, there's, there'll be a lull in January, then the students will be back, then we'll see the impact of that on the community. So rather than trying to pick a date to coincide with, with all the holidays and the goings and comings of the students, it was just easier to go with an indefinite on this one.
And we do keep track of, of, and, and not only that, but the, the state government keeps track of like, what the positivity rate is and how, how
Yeah.
people are, are infected and, and all that stuff. And I think we could, we could always come back at any date and just say, okay, well, you know, our, our positivity rates are down, and maybe we can, you know, uh, go back on this for a little, and see what happens at least, you know?
Right.
Mary Alice?
How would people feel about a March 1st date? That gets us through the holidays, it gets us through the students coming back. We have a whole month before the, the students come back, and then on March 1st, we evaluate whether or not these executive orders um, continue to be needed.
I'd support that.
Wanna make a motion?
Sure. Um, I move that we amend ordinance number 2020 hyphen 11 hyphen 063 to include an expiration date of March 1st, 2021.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna say unless?
I think it would still include all of those. It'd have to include all the rest of the regular expiration language.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to uh, put emergen, uh, ordinance 2021-11-063 with a expiration date of March 1st. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Is there a motion for the next?
Sure.
Dennis?
I, I move the ordinance number 2020-11-064, an ordinance amending a ratification of extension to emergency order number 20-09, Continued Guidelines Concerning Numbers of Attendees, Social Distancing, and Use of Face Coverings at Parties and Other Gatherings, for approval.
I second.
Would you add to your motion, the same language?
Expiring March 20, March 1st.
2021.
2021.
Okay. And who seconded that?
I did.
Sharice. Okay. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. And last is um, discussion. Stephanie, thank you very much to the UBA for sticking it out this late. Sure. Um, tonight I'm bringing to you for discussion the Urbana Business Association 2020-2021 Promotional and Marketing Agreement. In years past, the city has entered into a year-long agreement with UBA to not only promote the community, but to also host festivals, coordinate support, and networking activities for businesses, and collaborate with the city and other organizations to promote greater Urbana. While reviewing the 2021 financials of the UBA, it was determined that the organization was gonna be running a very tight budget. In previous years, the UBA has depended greatly on events to earn income. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, as we all know, traditional events were not going to be an option for the organization. The UBA Executive Director and Board creatively developed several new, untried, virtual and socially-distanced events with the goal of raising the necessary funding to maintain a balanced budget. Initially, the UBA had hoped to continue hosting the market in the square, which is a substantial fundraiser for the organization. But pandemic guidelines for social distancing, requiring vendors be set up a minimum of 30 feet apart, and that entrance and exit doors be monitored, caused the group to make the tough decision to cancel the market for this winter season, yet another hit to their budget. Concerns for the short-term vi, financial viability of the organization led city staff to develop a way to continue to offer services to Urbana businesses by extending an offer of employment to the UBA Executive Director. As he has accepted the position and will be joining the city on November 16th, he will carry on many of the tasks done previously for the organization and more. Per a conversation with Board President Tina Stover, the UBA intends to move forward with a part-time administrative employee focusing goals, on goals of developing a business mentorship program to support entrepreneurs and creating a 501(c)(3) foundation so as to be eligible for future grant funding. The proposed agreement is similar to last year's, except for the funding total, which staff recommends be $28,907.50 for half of the year, July 1st through December 31st, 2020. This amount will allow the city to reimburse the UBA for expenditures incurred during that time period per the terms of the agreement. As this item is only a discussion and not an action item, we are seeking comments at this time. We'll then schedule an item for action at a meeting in the near future. And Tina Stover from the UBA is also here, um, if you have questions. Tina, would you like to say anything?
All right. I'm trying to gather my strength. I'm very tired at this point, but I know all of you guys are too, so. I just wanna, I just wanna make it clear, so the, the money that we, um, Stephanie and Lori and myself and Darius have come up with, this is all for expenses that have already been incurred, um, payroll expenses and things that were already agreed on uh, previously. So you're just reimbursing us for half of what was already supposed to be given, kind of. Um, so it's not like anything more is gonna happen in December. That contract is going to end on December 31st, 2020, and then there will be no other contracts between yourselves and UBA. So it's just a finality cleanup thing. Darius is coming to work for you. Um, we're pursuing another avenue just so that we can be completely self-sufficient, which should have been done with the board previously all these years, but we didn't have that kind of board then, but we do now. So we're moving toward being self-sufficient away from the city, but also developing programs and stuff on our own that will help businesses in the downtown Urbana area, with maybe some partnership opportunities for the both of us later, um, next year in 2021, after we find out how COVID's gonna turn out. So I don't, I can't guarantee you that there'll ever be any other events going on. We may totally move away from events and totally go to a more substantial uh, business plan that will benefit businesses more and less on the event side. So there may never be another Sweet Corn Festival, but it had a good run, and maybe it's time to move on. So we're looking to be more of an asset to the businesses and business owners of the Urbana, and then partner with the city as well later, after we get everything restructured and um, uh, possibly get grants and funding and everything from the uh, government. Do you have any questions?
Dennis?
It's a brave and new world that you're discussing. Uh, the board, I assume, uh, supports uh, this direction. Is that correct, Tina?
Yes, 100%. We've already had an executive board meeting today about it as well. Um, we're just, we're just trying to improve upon things that should have been proved upon all these years and just never, I don't know why the previous administration never sought out um, being more self-sufficient, but there's never any time like the present. So now is the time to pretty much get, whether or not we call ourselves a UBA, or whether or not we call ourselves anything later, that will be determined. But we're not trying to be a draining asset on the city any longer. So that is what I'm trying to say. Our contract with you will end on December 31st, and then you don't, and then I, uh, my understanding is that um, you want us out of the building on March 31st, 2021. So we are to vacate that space, so we are looking for other alternatives for us to have our office even. That's my understanding.
And we haven't, um, this doesn't preclude events occurring in downtown Urbana. It would be just, um, I would seeking other entities who are interested in, um, perhaps in fostering events. But we don't know when events will be considered safe again.
Right, exactly. We don't know what, where, or how, or when COVID will take us into the future.
Yeah.
We're all waiting with bated breath to see what the next year will come about. And if we're able to do anything else on those lines and provide any other business events or any other events for the community, we will certainly be in touch. But until that time, we're working on restructuring, and we're working on um, making ourselves more self-sufficient and less reliant on the city for any future funding.
Dennis?
It's a big job, and I can't believe that the community and, that the city of Urbana can't support its own business association more thoroughly than what's happening now. But all right, if the city, if the city doesn't wanna have a business association or, or support something like that, you're obviously gonna be taking the, the bull by the horns and trying to, trying to create something that's gonna be offering something different. I mean, even if we didn't have events, and it wasn't event-oriented, I think, I think that the city should be supporting, it's a business association downtown. I can't believe it's not. But good luck.
Carol, did you wanna say anything?
No, I think I'll just let Dennis's comment stand.
Okay. And again, just, just so folks know, um, Darius White coming on board will be um, doing a lot of the functions that he was doing as part of the UBA, and supporting um, a number of uh, efforts in economic development. Jared?
Since it is discussion, we only have a few minutes left, uh, just to be prudent. If there was going to be something brought forward to uh, support giving them the remaining monies that were already uh, proposed, I would be okay with approving that if it came forward.
Yeah, it's very important that we um, hold up our end of the, uh, obligation, and to reimburse them for the expenses that they have already incurred, so we really need to do that. And Lori, can you remind me, do we have a special meeting scheduled yet?
Uh, no, but if we schedule a special meeting next week, and if it's approved, we can cut a check next week and not have to skip Thanksgiving week, meaning that they won't get a check until the beginning of December.
Okay, so we, we need to do that next week.
And that would, that would be greatly helpful as we are all on a time clock.
Yes, absolutely. Is that the sense of the council? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay. Okay, so we will schedule a special meeting as soon as we can, and we'll get that, that part taken care of.
Okay, and I greatly appreciate all that you have done in the past for the UBA, and we hope that we will be able to be a greater asset to you in the future.
I expect we'll be good partners.
Mm-hmm.
And I hope we emerge from COVID sometime the next, in the next year. It would be, make it much easier on all of us. Okay.
One more thing, Mayor.
Yes.
Well, before we make our exodus, the ordinance uh, number 2011-062, we voted on, oh no, it's 063, I'm sorry, we voted on the uh, on the motions, but we did not take the vote on that actual ordinance. We need to do that.
So that's the emergency um, extension of the emergency order?
Yeah.
Okay. I missed that vote. Okay. I thought we had the motion.
We did that, but it was, I think it's the amendments that was in there. We voted on the amendments and got all that out the way, but then we didn't go back and hit the ordinance.
Okay, I thought the motion was made with the uh, change and, with just adding the date. Okay, so we need to vote on ordinance 2020-11-063 as amended to expire March 1st, 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi, I know she is, but she's gone. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are we all right on the next ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other one was fine.
Okay, with no further business before this meeting, um, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.